Call to order the June thirteenth Chaska City Planning Commission, roll call please. And adjust your microphones, please, everyone, and cell phones muted if you haven't already. Roll call please.
Bobby?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Dolkey?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Keyport?
Here.
Pfeiffer?
Here.
And Chairperson Wong.
Here. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Subject to the changes.
Subject to the changes, yes.
I'll move to adopt the agenda, subject to the changes that we've received this evening.
So, motion by Keyport, second by...
I'll second.
Second by Dolkey. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, that said, there's two minor changes to the agenda that for the audience members. So, if you're here for item seven E, which is a public hearing to consider variance for Southwest Christian High School signs, or if you're here for the approved final site and building plan for Biolift Timothée Piercy, those two items have been postponed to the July meeting. So, you could probably go unless you just want to hang out for other reasons, or just enjoy our company here, and our witty sense of humor. So, with that, now's the time of the agenda for the visitor presentation. So, if you'd like to discuss anything with the Planning Commission that is not already on the agenda, feel free to approach the podium and announce your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Dan Cruz, and my address, forty-two seventy-five Creek Road. That's my residence, and that's also the place of where I do business, where my offices are, for Dan Co. Commercial Painting. And I've been there for eighteen years. And I am concerned about the development in the area, the roads and things, and I would like to make an invitation to someone to come to my house. I've tried to make invitations previously, so that, my place of business, I guess, so that I could discuss my daily business operations, because I do run heavy equipment in and out of there on a regular basis. I have four driveways presently on my property, and I would like to discuss this with someone to see if we could work together. I would really like to.
Okay. Is that something that staff could take in their dress?
We got a dress, and I'll meet him in the back and get a number.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, so, it looks like you guys are now connected.
Okay.
Cool. Awesome. You're welcome. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything that you'd like to address with the Planning Commission? If not, then we'll move on to the next item. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of the May ninth Planning Commission meeting?
Yes. Move to adopt.
I did notice one thing.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and I don't want to speak for you, Commissioner Cross, but I noticed that it talked about the roads being where, the trees being where they would put in the road. And my understanding was that you thought that the trees would be too close to the roads to survive?
They were going to be, if we're talking about the proper, I want to get the right name of the, of the...
Which page are you on?
It's page... Page six. It says, Commissioner Cross stated that a large number of trees that are in good shape are located where the road is designated to go, and so they would be removed. My understanding was that they weren't where the road is supposed to go, but that you thought they were very close to the road and therefore wouldn't survive.
Then, in this development, which has a road on the south side of that concept plan for Sagewood, there are definitely the big trees are where the road and actually some of the properties are going to be there, and that was marked as significant on there. So, they wouldn't, unless something was rearranged, they're not going to survive.
Okay.
That's...
So, it's correctly stated?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say so.
Any other discussion or items that we want to talk about? So, do you have a motion?
Move to adopt.
I'll second.
So, motion by Kelly, second by Cross. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, consent items. So, consent item number six A, adopt Planning Commission Resolution for district number twenty-one, for six fifty and seven hundred Chestnut Street redevelopment project in accordance with the twenty thirty comp plan. Any discussion on this item? Do you have a motion?
I would move to adopt. Resolution, resolution twenty eighteen dash oh one.
Second.
Motion by Keyport, second by Bobby. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we move on to the fun part of the agenda, action items. First one is approved preliminary site and building plan for rezoning of six fifty, seven hundred, and seven ten Chestnut Streets.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. We're looking at a preliminary site and building plan, a preliminary plat, and a rezoning request tonight specifically for the sites of six fifty, seven hundred, and seven ten Chestnut Street North. So, to give you an understanding of where the site is located, it is just on, within downtown, north of the Walgreens building, basically where two vacant buildings sit today. That used to be the gas station site and the former Michael Cycles building. The Fireman's Park Project and Curling Center is just across the street on the west side. So, specifically, we're looking at a preliminary site plan and site and building plan request for the redevelopment of the site. So, it would be for three lots within that site. The intention is to demolish the existing buildings that are on site, so the gas station building, as well as the Michael Cycles building, and then construct three new buildings in replacement of that. And one of those has been designated as a Dunkin' Donuts. The other two have yet to be identified in terms of their users. The preliminary plat approval would be to plat the overall site from three lots as it exists today to two lots. One lot would be for the entire site encompassing those three buildings, and then the other lot would be for the CDA parking lot that's on site. The rezoning approval or request tonight would be to rezone the site from C two, which is a general commerce zoning district, and then the planned multi-use district ten, and change it over to a planned commercial district nineteen. So, specific to the site. So, to give you more of a visual of kind of where these three sites are located within this area, the CDA parking lot exists on the very northerly tip, abutting Walnut Street and Highway forty-one, and then you have Michael Cycles building kind of in the middle there, and then the hotspot gas station site just to the south of that. So, in total, it's about a one-acre site for all of that. The former gas station site has been cleaned up in terms of its canopy and underground tanks, with the exception of the building. The current access into the site from Highway forty-one will relatively be maintained. With this new proposal tonight, there might be some slight modifications in terms of the overall design and access onto Highway forty-one, however. So, here's the proposed site plan. I decided to pick kind of the cleanest version of that plan, which was within the landscape plan. So, this is kind of turned sideways compared to looking at it in the northerly orientation. So, the north is basically on the left-hand side here where I'm circling it. So, basically, the three buildings are laid out, one on the corner here of Walnut and forty-one, a multi-tenant building in the center of the site, and then the Dunkin' Donuts is proposed on the southerly end of the site. They will be sharing a parking lot together, so you'll, they'll all have equal access to this parking lot for all three buildings. A drive-through is proposed on the Dunkin' Donuts building, which will be accessed through the shared driveway and drive aisles of the site, and then the access on the southerly end where roughly seven cars would be able to stack and be served. The parking for this site, they have forty-six parking spaces for this site, which actually meets the requirement out here in terms of square footage and uses that are proposed. In terms of landscaping, the only thing they're discrepant on is their understory trees or ornamental trees, so they'll have to address that as they come in for final, to put in those additional three trees that they're missing. Otherwise, they've met our requirement for parking lot islands and other landscaping that's proposed for the site. During the concept plan, we did bring up the item of potential pedestrian spaces for the site. So, in this plan tonight, they have denoted a patio location just outside of Dunkin' Donuts for people to utilize. In terms of the design of all of these buildings, two of the buildings are fairly similar in their design, which are the ones that are basically unoccupied with users right now. But basically, from their analysis that they done during their concept, they got a little bit more detailed with these plans, showing a majority of the buildings to be using brick, one of them being kind of more of a Chaska brick color, and then with kind of a secondary color to complement that. They'll be proposing some nice storefronts here, and then in the cornice areas, some dental detail, which is reminiscent of a detail that you would find in downtown Chaska. They will also be using goose neck lighting on the piers here in the front and on the sides, again, to reinforce that downtown Chaska feel. So, this is the multi-tenant building, again, very consistent in design, the exception of having two more spaces as opposed to one with the first building that we looked at. And then the Dunkin' Donuts building, just a little bit different than the other two, based on the branding and the prototype that they've been utilizing for this business. So, one of the challenges with this business is the fact that they do have to use certain prototypes for their businesses. So, it was a matter of working with some of the elements on this building to see where they could change some things, or some colors, to really have it fit in with downtown Chaska. So, some of the things that they did change are some of the colors that they selected for some of the accent materials, and then utilizing a Chaska brick color, and bringing in brick detail such as a basket weave for the brick, Chaska brick color to be utilized on this building. So, they did list out several changes that they did make, from where this building first stood to where they have it today to really fit in with Chaska. So, with kind of the changes that they've been able to make with this building to have it fit in with downtown Chaska, staff feels that they've definitely made some significant and favorable changes to the building. So, this building is made up mainly of brick, cementitious siding, some longboard cherry, which is a material that is consistent with what you see on the Bank Vista Building here in town, and then a majority of glass as well. So, really, this building is composed of mainly Class One materials. I do have material samples as well, if you need to understand kind of the color choices of the brick being picked out. In terms of the preliminary plat that they're proposing, again, like I noted before, they're plating the overall site into two lots. The lot one, block one, is the majority of the site, which would encompass the three buildings, and I've kind of highlighted that in blue, just to give you a clear idea of how much that takes up the site. And then, an additional lot for the CDA parking lot, just on the northerly tip of that, because, as I mentioned during the concept plan, the CDA will be giving a portion of their lot to this site to help with the redevelopment efforts, with the exchange of them being able to keep a remaining portion for parking for their building. So, this is kind of the end agreement that was, came up with for the site. So, in conclusion, we are asking you to make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat for the redevelopment of six fifty, seven hundred, and seven ten Chestnut Street North. And that's based on the conditions that are listed in their staff report. And then, a separate motion to recommend approval of the rezoning of the site from C two and PMD ten to the planned commercial district number nineteen. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, the applicant is in the audience as well.
Do we have any questions for Liz?
I do. There was, you commented just fractionally, that there may be changes in the access because of what the DOT is planning eventually to do. Do we have a timeframe on whether it's, whether we should be making those changes now, or is it going to be so far down the road before they do forty-one that we should make it work now?
Yeah, they've basically given them the resources and materials that they need to meet their access standards, so it really should be addressed during these site plan approvals, when they come back for final.
So, there will be a pushback from the, the right-of-way will enlarge? Is that basically what's happening for forty-one?
It eventually will, from my understanding, or it won't?
Nope.
It won't enlarge.
Does it make a difference to the developer that there will be a median, and that we'll be right in and right out, and not have an access?
I can't really speak for the developer, but I'm sure it will definitely change things.
We'll give them a chance to come up and ask a question, yeah.
Also, we shared that with the...
Right.
You did.
Right.
Okay.
So, they're taking that into consideration in their reconstruction, so.
Will the left turn be allowed at Walnut?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you have a left turn at Walnut and down at forty-one and sixty-one, but not at the Walgreens kind of common access there, nor into the drive that they have shown.
Okay.
Other questions for Liz? Thank you, Liz. We'll give the applicant an opportunity to approach, introduce yourself, and may ask a few questions.
Hello, Matt Roy, Bright Pixel Design, and I'm also here with the civil engineer, Mark Lawton.
Okay, so, anything you'd like to say, or, at this point, or?
Well, I think Liz kind of handled it pretty well there. We've tried to mix in as much as we can here in town. I was a little worried about the Dunkin' prototype when I first saw it, because it looked like it was more for like Las Vegas, and kind of reskinned it. So, you can still tell it's a Dunkin', but it doesn't look gaudy anymore. So, that will be, hopefully, they'll do more of those in their other towns. But, yeah, I think they're very nice buildings, and they'll fit in nicely.
You want to talk about the right-in, right-out access question that Commissioner Cross had earlier?
That is something that we've been aware of since the very, very beginning, and they're okay with, you know, applicant, or the developer and owners are not here, but they know that it's right in, right out. They feel like the vehicular traffic around the site works well enough that it won't really affect their business. I agree, I think.
I have a question. You added that patio area. Does that mean the bike rack that was planned for there goes away, or gets changed?
It's still there.
And it's still, the bike rack is still there?
We have two locations for bike racks on the site, one in the south area adjacent to that patio, and then one in the north area, kind of in between buildings one and two, in a small little landscape area.
Will there be a convenient access to the patio from Dunkin' Donuts, or do they go around the site?
Well, there's a very convenient access for employees. For customers, yeah, they just would come out the front door and then just go around the side.
Go around the side, that's, thank you.
I've got a question for you, in regards to safety, and it's something that I brought up a while back. And looking at the plan right now, again, I think I still have some serious issues with the flow of the traffic coming through your drive-through. I, I know how people react when they're going in and out of a parking lot. I know how people react when they get their food and they're ready to go. And so, what have you done to look at when people exit your drive-through? Have you looked at trying to U-it around, back out to the same street, as opposed to going into the parking lot? I, I see some issues happening there, long-term. I really do. I've seen that happen in other developments, and that's why I'm asking this.
Yeah, we did look at that, and we decided to do is move the building eight feet farther east from where it was when you saw it before. So, when people are walking there, they really have a nice, large panoramic view of the whole area. And then, also, for people that are picking up their iced coffee and coming out, the building doesn't really clip their vision like it did before. It's really quite open. As far as like having a secondary drive, I guess everybody that's seen it, including, you know, Mark, an earlier civil engineer, kind of just thought we err on the side of simplicity and not adding a whole nother driveline, so kind of just putting it right back out into the shared drive.
Okay. And this is where I'm looking at, people backing up and running into the guy that's not paying attention because he's drinking his coffee after he's got it, right?
Yeah.
So, that's where I'm having an issue. So...
Just, just FYI.
Yep.
Okay. Other questions?
Can you talk a little bit more about buildings one and two, and the size of the buildings, and potential uses or tenants that you'll be looking for?
Sure, sure. The developer is partnered with a real estate manager, and he's really good in Mankato and some of the outlying areas of bringing in kind of national tenants. And what he's seeing is, it's not like back in the day, maybe twenty years ago, where people wanted ten thousand square feet or fifteen thousand square feet. Like fifteen hundred square feet seems to be the new real sweet spot for people coming in. It's more these small businesses that it seemed to work better. So, that's why it's designed in that way, where the one building on the north end is a standalone, and that one's really kind of, I think, probably going to be the nicest one, because it's its own, and it's got the better materials all the way around it. You know, it's like almost all brick. And then, the other three are split up into usable-sized tenants that are about, I forget what the number is, but it's like, you know, fourteen hundred, eighteen hundred, two thousand, or something like that. So, it's got a real nice flexibility in tenants. That's why they're done that way. Now, if there was a tenant that wanted to come in and use two out of the three, it's very easy with those demising walls to connect the two. So, it could potentially be, I don't know, someone bigger, but I haven't got any scuttlebutt yet on who it's going to be.
And building number one, again, is fifteen hundred?
Building number one is just under fifteen hundred. It's like fourteen and change.
And you're hoping for retailers, restaurants?
Not restaurants. We only have the parking for one restaurant. The Dunkin' has that. I suspect it will probably be two retail and probably two service. So, you'll have an Edward Jones, and, you know, you'll have a, I don't know, a lawyer, you know, or something like that, along with two smaller retails.
That's exactly where I was getting at, because I think if there were a restaurant there, bike parking would definitely be tight.
Yeah, it's not designed for another restaurant.
A Chipotle, or, I know we're getting one already, but, okay.
They would have to buy the Dunkin' building, renovate it, and then turn it into a restaurant.
Okay.
So, here's a question, and, you know what, maybe, no, never mind. I'll ask the, I'll ask staff about it afterwards. Any other questions for the applicant?
Here, building number two. What is the back of that going to be like for the people that are in the apartment behind you? Are you, how tall, and are you covering two floors or whatever?
It's, it's a single-story, and it's about ten feet farther away than the current building that's there. I don't know if you've been back there recently, but it's really tight. It's kind of an odd orientation, the building that's currently sitting there. So, what we did is we went, I think, ten feet off the property line, all the way. So, it's about twenty feet between the back of the building and the CDA building. And we are showing three little landscape beds kind of back there. It's primarily designed to be kind of emergency exit. I don't really think it's going to have much public use back there. The CDA will probably use it, but the customers to our building, I don't think will. You know, they'll be parked out in front, and they'll access it from the front, and they'll exit right from there. Did you want to say anything about that backside?
No, other than it's, we replace it with, it's like three small landscaped spots that we...
Yeah, do we have access to this site?
Or?
Most of it is just replaced with sidewalks.
There was some thought early on to kind of making that a pedestrian area, and we, the more we thought about it, it didn't really seem like something that the new owner and developer really wanted to encourage people to be back there, just because it's kind of, it's kind of the back of house. You know, we kind of spent a little bit more money and time to make the sidewalks nice and wide in front, which is on the east side here. So, you can kind of see, we've got, you know, the typical sidewalk here, but then it gets quite a bit wider before you actually enter the building here, here, and here. And then, there's a large landscape area next to each of those entries. So, we kind of see those as the comfortable hangout kind of areas, but we're not putting any like formal benches and stuff out there, because we don't really know who the tenants are going to be, and we may not want people hanging out there. So, if it is a, you know, I know this is a bad, but a smoke shop or whatever, you kind of don't want those people hanging out in front of the place. So, so that's why we said, you know, if you want to hang out, you know, buy a iced coffee and a donut and hang out here. The north bike rack is right here, by the way, on the north side, and the other bike rack is here on the south.
So, could we go back to the, hey, Liz, could you help bring us back to that first image, the aerial view that showed the buildings? This is a different aerial view, I was thinking that one. I know it's kind of far out, but I was kind of wondering what like the residents, because the residents would come in either from the garage, because they'd park their car, or there's another entrance on the front side of the building.
Sure, sure. Yeah, as far as the, how that works, they will use it in pretty much the same way as they do now. And so, a lot of people, you know, kind of park out here and out in this lot. This lot, right now, typically only has about two or three cars usually kind of parked in that. So, we've got one, two, three, four, five, you know, five stalls there. But here's that backside, getting, I forget who asked the question, about what it feels like for them. It doesn't really cut off their view. It doesn't really change it much from what's there now, other than the fact it's a little bit farther away, and then the backside of that building is going to be like a siding rather than brick for kind of a residential feel. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, but I was saying, I was just more thinking from a traffic, a resident's use perspective, why would, what do the residents normally do in that area? It sounds like there's, I'm guessing that there's trash bins or dumpsters and stuff over.
Yeah, and those are right here, and they will remain.
Okay, so...
So, as far as how they work, it really doesn't change their work at all, other than, you know, they lose about six stalls from this lot, but...
There's parking here on that building.
There's parking, yeah, there's parking on the building over and over here as well.
Yeah, could those be for parking for people who are visiting the building or work in the building, not who live there?
And then, as far as, you know, for them to, you know, the pedestrian experience back here will be fairly similar to what it is now. This walk is there, and it will remain. And like I said before, this right here gets widened, and there's some landscaping back there. So, it'll be a little bit nicer than it is now, but not all that different.
Other questions? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. I do have one question for staff. So, there was a question that came up earlier about the resident, about the... So there was a question came up earlier about the resident, about the restaurant use and there's only enough parking for one restaurant. So what would happen if hypothetically, let's say that ten years down the road, this is built, you know, and another small restaurant wanted to relocate to one of these spots? What would happen then? Unless Dunkin' Donuts is there, now they're not going anywhere because they enjoy being where they are.
So your, your question is.
So like ten years down the road.
Probably one of permitted uses and conditional uses for the site.
Exactly, I just wanted to get that out there.
When we put together the rezoning for this, it would specifically address the parking concern and kind of the capacity for the site in terms of the uses that are allowed out there. So this, the rezoning is going to be very specific to kind of how it's laid out right now.
Yep, cool.
Another question for staff too, any concern with all of the traffic that's at Fireman's Park parking in this parking lot and walking across the street? Or how are we going to control, control that for the retailers that are there?
You know, we can't really stop people from parking over here and walking across the street. There's like any other establishment with parking, people are going to park where they want to park unless they put up, you know, private signage for this area for consumers of the site, then we don't really have any control.
So most of the, at this point, that's really going to happen is that there will be the crosswalk that goes across forty-one. And we encourage people to use that through signage, but the reality is that there's no real practical way to say people have to cross there. If someone says, you know what, I just finished, I'm between curling matches, I got to get some donuts, they're going to just jet across the street, we can't stop them.
Well, and that's okay, but it's just something for the developer to think about is I see when it's busy at Fireman's, they're going to fill up with a lash.
And walk across the street.
One of the things that we've been working on as well is to the east of there with the Cooper site and the redevelopment there is, in terms of the city involvement, is adding a public parking component, which then would provide that space on that side if people wanted to access Fireman's Park in that general direction with the another Hawk signal at where walnut comes out there. So it would kind of encourage people because that's where the safe place to go is and cross. But again, people might not utilize that, but at least we're trying to provide for it.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I did have one more question for staff. There's nothing that I can see that deals with the demolition, is that a separate application and a separate worry about? Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, so, let's see, is this public hearing? So do we have any motion or any discussion we'd like to have? Thoughts, comments, what do we think?
I think they've done a really good job of, of laying out the area, other than the fact that I really still have an issue with the way the drive-through is. I, I've watched this happen in other developments where people go through the drive-through and they come out and they're looking at what they got in the bag or they got their whatever, and they're not paying attention. There's no stop sign there. You're entering into a parking lot where you don't know which direction somebody's going to be coming at you or backing out of. And I just see a potential accident, I really do. And I don't know, it's just, it's just something that I would, I would like them to reconsider, looping that back out to the same side that it's coming into. I mean, just back out to that same road as opposed to going through the whole driveway.
Do you think signage, they can have appropriate signage that would alleviate the concern some?
It would have to be a stop sign at the end of when they're exiting into the parking lot and, and controlling somebody from rolling through a stop sign. That's one problem. The other problem is, is, is people backing up, you know, you have kids in the car, you got this or that going on, you know. It's, I just see, it's different than, you know, coming onto a main road where you people, you got this and this happening. You're looking for that a little bit more as opposed to, you don't know where it's going to come from. Somebody rushing in there trying to get to the place too, right? So that's, that, that was the only concern. I really like what they did with the buildings, they look really, really nice. I think they've did a great job of laying out things. I just have a problem with, with the flow of the drive-through. Just my thought.
Overall, I like the project, I'm glad to see it. I think it's a significant improvement to downtown from what's been there for many years. And I am glad to see that they've reoriented the buildings and the drive-through to the degree that they've been able to do that. I mean, it is a tight fit on that parcel for three buildings, so. But I think they made good use of space and, so.
Well, and I think also, I mean, it sounds like they've done a fair amount of work in trying to improve the sightlines of everybody through moving that building, which I think, you know, with signage and the improvement of the sightlines, I mean, that might be pretty much what you, what you can do. I don't know about adding more directions of driving and whatnot, might just complicate it more. So, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it, but I didn't mean, I agree, it's tight, it's tight.
Huge improvement over what's there, so I'm really happy to see it.
They added a little, I like the patio space they added and still have, I think it's good use of the, of a tight space.
Any other thoughts? I think overall, I think the buildings look really, really nice. I think that'll be a great addition, you know, certainly is a fantastic improvement over what's there today. I'm not really as concerned about the, about the drive-through there. I mean, moving the building back like eight feet, I mean, that's like, you know, that's like three-quarters of a compact car that we just moved it back, almost a full parking space. It's enough that, you know, as people are coming through there, you know, I don't, I mean, I think someone would have to be really irresponsible and just totally gun it. And not to mention the fact that they'd be driving right into parked cars if they really didn't go any faster than that. You can see there's cars on the other side of the lane, so knowing that they have to turn either left or right to go out of the parking lot. So, but I think that the addition of the patio is a really nice addition on the back there, so. And also make sure that there's bike racks and, you know, for people to stop in. So I think this is great. I also like the, you know, keeping the location of the monument site consistent with where it is today, which is good. So certainly the signage will be good to have, so.
Just one thing, kind of a glitch with our new on-base system there.
Yes.
Seven A, B and C are public hearings, and so you do need to open a public hearing for this, as it's a rezoning.
Yeah, I was just looking at that earlier, I was like, this isn't a, okay.
We were just noticing that.
Since this is a public hearing, I'll officially open the public hearing at seven thirty-eight. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak or address the planning commission about this? Good, go ahead.
This is a, it's a real minor one, but it's in line with Commissioner Kelly, just the, with the traffic coming out. So I was actually hit by a car, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I apologize, I don't usually come to these.
Rob McKenna, one one zero nine seven zero, up in the Johnsburg Association, Long Person Circle, that's right. I was hit by a car here in Chaska riding a bicycle, and so my only concern about the new development is the amount of traffic that's coming into that. So as you know, Michael's Cycles, that's in that site now, or that was, that moved down the street towards like the Dunn Brothers there. There's a Minnesota State Trail, so there's a fair amount of traffic that comes through here with cyclists. And let me just be upfront, I don't like cyclists, I think a lot of them are rude and considerate. I stay on the roads if I can. That being said, so I was on a road when I got hit, so I have some concerns about the amount of traffic that's going to be coming through here. I don't have a specific recommendation, I just want to make sure that that's considered thoroughly to make sure we don't have any further issues like the one I had. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the planning commission? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-nine. So any further thoughts, guys?
I would make an emotion, I would make a motion to approve the preliminary plan and preliminary plat for the redevelopment of six fifty, seven hundred and seven ten Chestnut Street North, based on the conditions listed in the staff report.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Pfeiffer, second by Keyport, any further discussion?
I'd like to see an amendment added to that where they do reinvestigate the flow of the traffic around the building. That was just my, my personal thought.
What do we think? Do you think it's, yeah, sorry, Kevin? Oh, we need to vote on this one? Okay, so we have a motion by, was it Keyport and then, oh, motion by Pfeiffer, second by Keyport, right. So, so we need to vote on the motion first because we have the further discussion, that's where Kelly came in.
There's a motion and a second, if somebody wants to amend it, they can amend it. Then you vote on the amendment and vote, then vote on the question, has amended or has not amended.
Okay, so you're proposing an amendment, so we're voting on it with a proposed amendment?
Well, we have to.
Okay, so.
With a condition to, to look at rerouting the flow of the traffic within the ride-through.
So does anyone second that amendment?
You've got no second.
No second? Okay, so then we, at this point, we would. So, so does we vote on the motion as it stands without the amendment? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay by Kelly, motion carries. Now, there should be a second motion here.
Yes, I would move approval of the rezoning for C six fifty, seven hundred and seven ten Chestnut Street North from C two and PMD ten to Plan Commercial District, PCD nineteen.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Keyport, second by Dolkey, any further discussion on the rezoning? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So we're done with that one? Thank you, gentlemen. So on to preliminary plan and rezoning for Formcoat.
Thank you, members of the planning commission. We're looking at another preliminary site and building plan, preliminary plat and rezoning tonight. This one specifically for Formacoat, which is locating on the Chaska Building Center site. So this site is located not too far from downtown. Actually, it is considered a part of downtown, but right off of Chaska Boulevard, also known as County Road sixty-one. There is currently a building owned by the Klingelhutz family or DDK Construction, just to the west of this subject site. So as it exists today, it is a vacant site with some old concrete pads from the former buildings that were on that site. So we're looking primarily at kind of the center section of this vacant area. So Formacoat is a business that currently is in Savage, but the business owner currently lives in Chaska, so they're trying to bring the business back into their home. And so specifically for this site, in May of twenty-ten, the concept plan was approved for the entire site, for the entire Chaska Building Center site. And then in October of twenty-eleven, the preliminary and final were approved for the DDK building that exists today. So we're kind of moving forward with the preliminary for kind of the center of the site that's left over. So specifically, the preliminary site plan is for a new building on the site, approximately thirty-one thousand square feet in size and then thirty feet in height. It will basically be a office slash industrial building, housing their business. The preliminary plat would be to basically plat the two current lots there today into two new lots. So basically reconfiguring the acreage out there for the sites to accommodate this business. And then the rezoning is rezoning the site from a planned multi-use district to another planned multi-use district, something that's more appropriate to what's being proposed tonight. So in total, the vacant area that you see on this exhibit or aerial is roughly seven point seven five acres in size for both of those vacant lots. There were various buildings, one of them being a former fire station for the city that used to encompass this area. So that's kind of why you see a bunch of different concrete pads on the site today. So a part of the efforts and a part of the planning for this new business to come to town is really cleaning up the site and getting it back to working order, so cleaning up the, the concrete pads out there. The access into the site is quite interesting, given the fact that there were so many various uses on the site before. You see multiple different drive, driveways off of County Road sixty-one as it exists today. So when this plan came through concept and as we're working through it with the county now, they will be limiting the amount of accesses onto this site. So that's something we'll continue to work with them throughout this process. So for the site plan, I'm showing both the site plan and the landscape plan on here for reference. The building is basically centered in this, centered in the site, it's rectangular in footprint. They're also showing a future expansion area just on the west side of the building, approximating at roughly nine to ten thousand square feet in size. In terms of the layout, so there's an existing access over by the DDK building that DDK uses, but will be a shared access with this site. So that will provide kind of primary access into the site for people off of Chaska Boulevard. This is still kind of being discussed right now in terms of the secondary access that they're showing, based on the limitations that Carver County has presented to us. So that there might be some reconfiguration as this comes back for final. Another piece that they're showing is a continuous drive aisle that will connect with the DDK site and basically run along the northern area of the site to connect with Fire Lane. This will basically provide truck access back into those loading docks back there for the site. In terms of parking, they're proposing a hundred and eighteen spaces shown on these exhibits here. In order to kind of meet their full build-out for the site, they will need a hundred and thirty-three spaces. So fifteen spaces more, which by the looks of it, they'll be able to accommodate on the site somewhere through proof of parking. We obviously only want them to construct what they need for their business at the time and just to show proof of parking for the rest of it, so that there's no unneeded significant amounts of pavement on the site. In terms of landscaping, in, for meeting the landscape plan, they are deficient by eight overstory trees. So they'll have to figure out how to incorporate those onto the site. It was noted that next to the loading dock would be a beneficial location to locate these trees to provide for further screening of that area. This is the drawings of the building. They also have a couple rendering, renderings that I'll go through as well. But in terms of the design, the majority of the building is concrete panels and they have decided to use an aggregate concrete panel versus a raked finish that they showed in their building plans, which would meet our requirements for industrial buildings. So the other portions of the building will be made up of glass and brick, mainly on the front or the south and portions of the east and west sides, which staff finds is appropriate way of compiling the materials on the building, given the high exposure from Chaska Boulevard and less exposure in the rear on the, on the north side. And a couple renderings, from the front to the back here, and then an overview of the entire building. So generally speaking, the building does present itself to be a very appealing and aesthetically pleasing structure by all accounts. So generally speaking, the building does present itself to be a very appealing and aesthetically pleasing structure by all accounts. And then here's their preliminary plat, just show, showing how the lots are going to lay out after this plating process. So with that, we are asking you to make a motion to approve the preliminary, or recommend approval of the preliminary site and building plan and the preliminary plat, based on the conditions listed in the staff report. And then a separate motion for the recommendation of approval of the rezoning from PMD four to PMD twenty-one. So again, because of the rezoning piece of this and the plat piece, this is a public hearing tonight. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, the applicants are here as well.
Some questions for Liz?
Yes, I guess I do. You've already kind of mentioned the county was interested in closing all of those access. And they gave us a revised idea about how the building would be placed, which is not the same as we are being presented. And I'm just wondering, have, has the client seen this other suggestion?
Yes, we forwarded the county memo over to them. But they're not necessarily telling them to move the building, they're just talking about where the accesses could be on County Road sixty-one.
I did have a question about the planting landscape. I would be remiss if I didn't. They're talking about on the west side removing fourteen of the evergreens that are basically on the lot line. And I just don't understand why they would take down screening. And that's what it says on the landscape plan.
We can definitely have the applicant come up and address that, but from our understanding, those are going to remain in place. Those are existing.
Oh, wow.
I have a question for Liz. You know, Min, the county and Mendat were, are adding a center median on sixty-one. Does that extend through this area? That center median?
No, it doesn't.
It does not? Okay, so they will have left in access-
Yep.
At whatever access point they have.
Down the bridge-
Okay. Okay. And then would this user in the middle of the property have access from the Fire Lane side as well? So that, so there'll be an easement or something that they can get through to all three operators from Fire Lane? Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Liz? Thank you. We'll give the applicant an opportunity to approach and say anything you'd like to add. Like to introduce yourselves, gentlemen?
I'm Mark Gross and I'm owner of Formaco and I guess that means I'm the developer, doesn't it?
You are. I'm Bruce Harrell, I'm the consulting engineer and contractor also on the project.
Okay, great. Anything you'd like to add to the presentation so far?
We worked a lot with staff in working the building on the site and specifically with the stormwater ponds in the back, making sure that we maximize that and also planning for the site to the east. So the stormwater is utilizing the site and also looking forward to the, to the site on the, on the other side. Also trying to get, make sure that we had future proof of parking. Mark and his business will not need near the parking that the site will allow. But should there be a change in use or his building expand and his employees expand greatly, there is, there is plenty of parking there. So I think it's, it's using the, using the site very efficiently. We moved it around quite a bit. We don't know exactly what Carver County is going to say. We may have to move that access a little bit, based on their final feedback from that standpoint. On that, we looked at a lot of the different materials and I think the glass and the appearance of the building is really going to improve the whole drive along that. It's a, I, I think it's a very, very nice design and the amount of glass is really going to be a, be a benefit to the company and also to the sightlines.
I, I will say that when some of the original concepts, drawings were drawn up, I said, yeah, okay, you know. But then when the architect read the city code and presented the drawings that you saw, I was like, wow, I, I'd like to own that. It looked really good. I do want to add, my wife is here and my son is here and his girlfriend and, and because obviously they've all supported this effort of sixteen years of building a business.
Thank you guys for coming to Chaska.
And Mark is a Chaska resident?
Yes. Very cool.
I, I had seen some plans for, for growth and job opportunities and I was just curious on what kinds of new opportunities might be available for Chaska residents down the line with your company?
Sure. We are a manufacturing company, so we actually, what we do is we put coatings onto medical devices. Basically like a catheter, guide wire, it goes up and down your veins and arteries, it makes them go smoothly. That's a simple understanding of what we do. And there's, there's a good amount of, of handwork, a good amount of engineering and maintenance, electronic kind of, of work, and then administrative work. And so basically you got three levels of, of types of employment opportunities. And because I'm a former employer, employee from Lifecore Biomedical that moved to the area in the early nineteen nineties and then also former employee of Lakewood Manufacturing, this is really an extension of that. It's classic spin-off type of situation. Because the material that they make at Lifecore, I use every day in operations. It doesn't come from Lifecore unfortunately, but that's a different deal, so. But it's the nature of how, how businesses, spin-off from businesses and, and I'm one of those spin-offs in a way. And so I think they're good paying jobs. The lowest paying job I have now is, is to a seventy-two-year-old janitor and I pay him thirteen dollars an hour. And he works two days a week and makes his life happen. Most of the manufacturing jobs are in the eighteen to twenty dollars an hour range plus, you know, healthcare. I provide two thousand dollars a year in HSA for their savings accounts. We have a 401K, I don't think matching yet, but someday. Life insurance policies, disability policies, all those kind of things. And we work, the request for the development of, the development agreement for this property stated fifteen jobs in roughly two years. And, and, and those are full-time positions and those are in addition to the ten full-time positions that I have now. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thanks. Thank you.
So I want to get back to the, the plan. Commissioner Cross had a question about the trees in the back being removed, the evergreens, correct?
It's the trees that are next to Klingelhutz place. There is, it's right there in micro-sized writing. It says fourteen existing black, I mean, yeah, black spruce, green spruce heights to be removed for driveway connections to cabinet shop. And I can't figure out what that means. There is a whole row of evergreens that are as right, looks like it's right on the property line, that screen from this lot to that area. And I don't know why you'd take down screening trees. I don't understand that.
I think maybe what that was meant to say is the, where the connection, the truck lane connection is, there would be a couple of trees removed, but not all of- Not all of the trees.
Actually, it doesn't say fourteen. If you read clear, carefully, it says there's fourteen existing black hills and green spruce heights, six to ten feet. And then it says parenthesis, three removed for driveway connection.
You can barely see that, three.
It's small.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. My questions also, I hope you'll be patient with them. It's because of, well, Lifecore was one of the reasons why I'm asking some of these questions. You're considered a clean industry, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And your workers on the floor wear uni, uniforms, coveralls, or-
Working in a cleaner environment, they wear airnets. If they have a beard, they wear a mask, kind of, you know, beard net. And then they wear-
Fish?
Lab coats and booties.
Booties. Are you, since it's a, since you are coating things, is it a liquid that they're working with? Is it a spray on something or what?
There are liquids involved, yes.
Okay. And this goes back to my one question. Are, in your plans, they don't show anything like for emergency eyewash stations or anything like that? Is that anything of, of concern?
Uh, we haven't reached that level of detail in terms of the interior of the building.
Okay.
But I can tell you that in my current ten thousand square foot facility of manufacturing warehouse space, that we have two eyewash stations.
Thank you.
And, and one has been used. It was a long, long time ago.
Do you produce hazardous waste?
We have hazardous waste. It's a one fifty-five gallon drum that's emptied on a yearly basis, doesn't even get filled up. When we talk to them about our hazardous waste, they usually laugh at us.
I'm so very glad. Do clients come to you or do you basically go to clients?
Most of the things that occur in this business are we receive packages from UPS and Federal Express. And, and, and they're received in, when customers come and visit, they, they may come, you know, once a year kind of thing. And we have customers from around the world. And, and so, but it's not a routine kind of thing to have people visiting.
Then one last question. You have wonderfully tall glass windows and I think they look, I really like the look of the building. But right on the other side, on the second floor, you've got it aimed for storage. Are your, is your glass going to be coated or something so a person driving up is not going to look up and see boxes or whatever?
The windows will be, they're going to be tinted with probably a solar coating to give more energy efficiency than even a typical thermopane, which will actually give it more tinting than you would see in a, right now it's called out for a, either a bronze or a gray tinted glass. But that solar coating will actually make it a little deeper, so you won't see that.
So you won't see inside?
Right.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
And so other questions for the applicant?
Of the, the deliveries of the coatings that you guys have coming in is, is, I mean, I'm just trying to fathom how much that is. What is, is that the packages that you're referring to?
You got it.
That's all it was? Okay, so there's not chemical trucks coming in?
So, we, our biggest volume coating, we purchase about, I expect to be purchasing about, oh, twenty liters a week. That comes in three boxes, not like a-
Oh, okay, understand.
That happens to be about thirty thousand dollars, but-
It's a big building for that short bull-
Yep, yep.
Package. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so thank you. What we're going to do, so this is a public hearing, so we'll open up to the public now. Does anyone like to speak or say anything on the record on this item? So please approach the bench or place the podium. And please state your name and address to the record, please.
Daniel Lee. I have thirty-two thirty Julian Drive, Chaska, Minnesota. I own the property just to the east, the Cuzzi's property, and would welcome any redevelopment of that site. I would love to have you in town. My only concern would be that Fire, Fire Lane is our only access to our site. And I think Mr. Kelly's question about trucks and receiving and shipping, if that is going to be an access point, it's not going to be semi-truck traffic for the most part, or that, that would be one of my concerns. There's semis coming and going all day and my customers are coming and going as well and my tenants there. That, that would be my only concern, but again, I would welcome any redevelopment. So that's it, thank you.
Oh, I'm going to answer your question. We do have semis come.
Okay.
Currently, it's one truck once a week and then for pickups and then one truck once every six weeks for deliveries.
Kind of, like you said, he kind of got, got that question ahead of me, but again, I would love to see him chat.
So anyone else who'd like to speak? Yep, name, record, sorry, name and address again, please.
This is Kate Robb McKenna, one one zero nine seven zero, Bonhurston here in Chaska. So you guys are going to see me quite a bit. I actually, not in a bad way, but I, 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 I cover Chaska as far as like through cycling and walking and biking and hiking all over. There's probably not a, a road or trail I haven't passed in Chaska at some point. So my question is, point of information is like when the Northern Star came in, there was a lot of complaints about the noise in the residence, if you guys remember that up there? By eighty-second Highway forty-one, there's some pretty noxious noises and some smells. I hike up behind that, that trail at least once, twice a week, something like that, some pretty bad smells. So I was hoping, I didn't hear anything about it. If you could just address any noises or smells that are coming, come from that building, just so we can, I'll be behind that building as well at some point, you know, each month.
I plan to bike tour, by the way. It is a clean industry. There, there are, will be some solvent-type smells on occasion, really small volume. And primarily, they have not been an issue so far with any of our neighbors currently. We're not necessarily, I don't think they're an issue.
Are you in like a, in a residential type of area like the, the hind areas right now?
No, so, so it is true, we just have other business around us. There's not a lot of people outside. Again, I don't, nobody's ever had any issues including OSHA when they come in and the smells and all that kind of stuff.
Well, even the Northern Star one doesn't, they don't have anything non-compliance that I know of, but when I come back there, every day, there's something like smells really bad back there. It's pretty gross. So is there anything you could compare it to when there's a, there's a venting that you guys do that you would compare the smell to as far as strength and or similarity of smell?
It's a mild solvent smell if it exits at all, whether or not there has to be some kind of scrubber, I don't have no idea. We haven't gotten to that level of detail. But typically, right now, we don't scrub anything and we can't smell anything outside of the building.
Oh, and it's mostly just nosebleeds inside, but outside you guys have them in?
Right.
Fair enough? Okay.
Okay. What we live with every day is fine with OSHA, so.
Anyone else have anything to address with the Planning Commission on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing at eight oh nine. Let's bring it back to the commission here. Any thoughts, discussions?
I'm excited for this company to come to Chaska. They're small now. They are, they're obviously building for expansion and like Dan, I think as Dan said, that's got to be, we got to get something going down there. And that is, this is perfect in my mind.
My comment would be that that site was guided in the downtown Chaska master plan for jobs. That was a great spot to put jobs and this is a great fulfillment of that objective, I think. And so I'm really happy to see it. I'm, I think Commissioner Cross mentioned the windows. I love the windows. I remember when we re, had the, the DDK building resc- I remember when we had the DDK building rescind, getting any kind of windows was a challenge at that point. So, so this is, this will be very nice to see along that, along that roadway. So, so I'm thrilled to see it coming, so.
And I want to echo Commissioner Keport's comments about the windows. Very few industrial flex buildings have a nice facade like that. So happy to see that and excited about the jobs, so. I'm glad you're coming to Chaska.
Question for staff, what's happening with the slab that's there right now?
It's going to be removed.
Looks like a lot of work.
Creates jobs.
It's got to be dirtwork.
Other comments, questions, thought, discussion?
I guess I'm going to just, just say, tag on a little bit about the slab. I'm hoping that they don't find anything nasty underneath. But once upon a time, that was a boat building and motors and all those type of things that I always worry about. But I think when I walked the slab, the slab looked like it was clean. But, and I'm hoping there's no oil anyplace underneath, but that's, that's an unknown.
Have you done your phase one?
Yes, so Mark Gross, former co, yes, we've done phase one, core drillings in six locations, I believe. And we didn't find anything that would be problematic from a toxic waste standpoint. There's a few issues of some areas where it's too much more organic material that needs to be dug out and removed for good foundation. That's mine, more or less than we would expect for a site that's as old as this. It's actually less of a problem than I would hope, so, so, or fear.
Any thoughts, questions? So I just wanted to, you know, to, to thank Mr. Gross for bringing your, bringing your business back to Chaska. You know, certainly this is a great example of seeing something where, like you mentioned, that this is one of those industries that spun off and, you know, certainly it's like, you know, with any community, we have like potential spinoffs. We'd love to see more of those spinoffs because it only helps our community grow richer and bring more jobs and more prosperity to, you know, our community near a little corner of the world. So certainly, you know, thank you very much for continuing to reinvest back into your own hometown here. And, you know, we'd love to have, love to see that. I think we're, I'm really pleased with the look of the building, the, and the fact that it's a, it's a very modern contemporary design that, you know, has room for expansion and growth, so you can continue to grow and stay here for a long time. And I also, I think this is also, just as a side note too, this is a great example of where the, the commercial building, building standards have really come into play and they help to drive the, you know, a lot of the high quality of glass and materials and the facade of the building. So that those standards, this is one of those areas where, you know, we would have had a lot of discussions back and forth, or we shouldn't add this or add that. But I think, you know, we spent a lot of time a few years ago laying out some guidelines to really help people understand this is what expectations are in their community. So I think this is a great example of like something that comes to the, you know, comes to this commission and first time around, everyone's like, really like it, you guys like it, and we're happy with it, so.
If I may?
Yes, please.
While we were meeting with staff one day and after the meeting, I went to Kevin and I asked him, "So what do you want this building to look like?" And he said, "Just meet the code." And, and indeed, that dictated much of the look, but like I told you with my earlier story, the first rendition, yeah, okay, you know. And then when I looked at it, I'd really be proud to own that. And so, so it does all really look really nice. Yeah, it costs a little more, but, eh, well, you know. Hopefully, we'll be all living with it for a long time and it will weather very nicely because this kind of FabCon tip-up wall product is very durable and high energy efficiency. And it really does look nice, so.
Hopefully it suppresses some of those clients you have coming from overseas too.
There is that, you also have to worry about the ones that are like, "How much am I paying for this?"
Well, thank you. Okay, so, do you want to say something?
Nope.
So we have a motion?
Oh, do you want to do it? Oh, yes. I would really like to make a motion to recommend approval to the city council for the preliminary site and building plans and preliminary plat for phase two of the Chaska Building Center, Form Code, subject to thirty provisions.
I'll second.
So motion by Cross, second by Keport, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then I'd like to motion to recommend approval of the rezoning from planned multi-use district PMD 04 to planned multi-use district PMD 21.
Second.
Motion by Keport, second by Vobi, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Great.
Thank you.
Good luck.
More steps to go.
Yes.
Very cool, so off to our, to the next item on the agenda, Harvest West Traditions Development.
Thank you, members of the planning commission. We're looking at a preliminary plat and rezoning request tonight for the Harvest West development in southwest Chaska. Going to provide a couple of aerials for you just to orient yourself in this area. But the Club's West development that exists today is currently on the east side of Savannah Way, the new collector road, which you can actually see in this aerial halfway up to its extent, pretty much. So the site we're looking at tonight basically encompasses the area on the west side of Savannah Way, hence its development name. And then a couple more, just kind of orienting you to the site in relation to other parts of the city. And a little bit more zoomed in perspective. Again, the site is bordered or encompassed by County Road 44 on the south side, Savannah Way on the east side, and then Highway 212 on the west side. So the preliminary plat tonight is specifically for 129 lots out there. And those are basically divided by two different products that they're going to be providing. So it's divided with 49 cottage lots, which are also known as basically the detached townhome lots, and then 80 village lots, which are more of your typical single family lots. And then in total, they're going to be encompassing 57 acres of that site. And then the rezoning is going to be from an open zoning district to a planned residential district, specifically PRD 72. So in terms of the existing conditions out there, the acreage of the site is roughly 57 acres. It's, a majority of it is open farmland and then with some groves of trees kind of centered along the site. The three major roads I referenced before were Highway 212, Savannah Way, and County Road 44. So that comes into play with kind of the screening piece of this, and I'll get into that a little bit further down the line. So to understand kind of that breakup of the different product that they're providing out there, as you can see in the yellow, that is their cottage lot or the detached townhome product that they're proposing. That's going to be kind of a smaller product on 53-foot wide lots. And then the village lots are oriented more towards the south of the site, which will, again, be your typical single family lots. A little bit smaller than what you see over in the existing Club West neighborhood, but still has kind of that look and feel of your traditional single family. So a couple drawings and images of these different products. So the cottage homes are above, so as you can see, it's a little bit more smaller in scale in terms of the look and footprint of these buildings. And then the village homes are denoted below. So just a different, a little bit different style than what we've seen in their existing neighborhoods. So 129 lots, again, the access into this development is off of Savannah Way. So that's going to be the primary access into the development. So it's going to line up with Vista View Drive to the east, which connects into the existing Club West and Savannah Estates neighborhood. So that's basically just going to carry through into this development to provide the access to the internal streets. We've noted in the past too, there will more than likely be a secondary entrance into this development on Savannah Way when the north area gets developed. One of the big components with this development is the fact that they will be providing a 12-acre park as a part of their plans, which is consistent with the southwest Chaska guidance for this area. So this will be a city park, a neighborhood park proposed. And I'll get into a couple more details on that a little later as well. They will be providing sidewalks on both sides of the street per policy requirements with the city. So that will help gain access into the site as well as provide direct access into the public park. There's a park access proposed just off of Vista View Drive as you're entering into the development. And I'll show a couple visuals of that as well. So there's one proposed there, and then there's also one proposed kind of on the southerly tip of the public park area in between a couple homes. Another existing condition piece as a part of this site is they do have three wetlands on site that have been delineated. There has been some concerns brought up with one of the wetlands as it intersects one of the private properties just to the east of this site. So I know the applicant has tried to reach out to the neighbors who are concerned about this to really address this in more detail and figure out some middle ground on that. So I know communication has started on this and a condition that has been added to your staff report is to provide further detail on this wetland as this moves forward. So one of the big pieces with this development is providing adequate screening, given the fact that they're abutting three major roadways here in the city. So Savannah Way, we went through the same discussion with the neighborhoods and developments to the east of Savannah Way to provide screening in the form of birmingham and landscaping. So they are showing consistent screening with what has been proposed on the east side. I'll show a couple section drawings of that in just a mere moment. County Road 44 is also a big one. So they're also showing some consistent screening there. And then there's a, an existing berm on the west side, just on the northerly area though, basically where the cottage lots are. That will help provide significant screening from Highway 212. With all three of these different areas, there are different grade changes and something that will hopefully provide some clarity in the next exhibit. But really trying to find a balancing point with landscaping and if birmingham helps as well to provide that additional screening for these roadways. I think one big comment noted in our staff report is the continuing the screening along this western edge up to basically the point where that birmingham, existing berm starts, to really provide that buffer and separation from Highway 212. This one's going to be the biggest one to really separate this neighborhood. So as this comes back for final, our biggest requirement is really looking at this western edge to really continue that screening and necessary buffering and noise mitigation all the way through with this site. So they do have to meet, or they do have to do a noise study in relation to the impacts of Highway 212. So I know the applicant has at least started on that and will have to get that completed early on here before council to really understand the impacts of Highway 212 with this development. So here are a couple section drawings, so they provided one for the Highway 212 birmingham that's currently existing out there. So it is a very significant berm separating the lots from Highway 212. The County Road 44, different, pretty different grade change there in terms of the site is more depressed or recess compared with the roadway there. So landscaping out there would help mitigate potential nuisances from the road there. And then along Savannah Way, kind of a similar layout that you've seen with pretty much Savannah Estates to the east of this development showing some birmingham and some landscaping to help create a consistent screen with the other developments. Coming back to the park topic, so again, 12 acres is being proposed to be dedicated as parkland space. We've kind of denoted, you know, some potential uses, both encompassing active and passive areas in this park, given kind of the conditions of the park and open space areas and wooded areas that are present out there. I did want to note that the programming of the park really is not going to be solidified during these approvals for this development as kind of our best foot forward would be to try to get some residents into that development and people who are going to be utilizing this park to have engagement in how this park plays out. So with homes going into this development and it filling up, would we start the process to develop this park and have it become something that is desirable by the people living there? In terms of exposure and connectivity, I did touch on the connections a little bit earlier, but exposure was a big piece during the concept process. So they have provided a couple visual simulations as you're approaching kind of the main entrance into the park and whether or not that seemed adequate. So these are those simulations that they were able to create for us and really kind of gave you that pedestrian feel as you're entering into the neighborhood and then zooming in to the park entrance here. One of the big things for us is making sure that it's well exposed so that people can find the park, but also a safety component too, to ensure it appears to be set up to be a safe park. So we did have our parks director and public works director weigh in on this and they did come to the conclusion that it appears that it's meeting the needs of what they require out there. So in conclusion, we are asking you to make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat for the Harvest West based on the conditions listed in the staff report. And then a separate motion to recommend approval of the rezoning from an open zoning district to a planned residential district, PRD 72. I'm happy to answer any questions, otherwise the applicants are here as well to answer questions. And please note, this is a public hearing as well.
So any questions for Liz?
Yes. The birmingham or the screening from Savannah Way, is that actually going to be on the lots? It's not going to be separate or anything? They're going to have
Yes.
Some plants there that technically they're supposed to take care of, so the screening is accomplished?
Yep, a portion of it will be on private property there, but a portion of it will be on common ground as well. So they will, on private property, it's basically within their ownership maintenance.
Right now, there is one house on, off of 44. I assume that's going to be demolished and not just switched around and put on a lot or anything like that?
Right, right, the one that's generally over in this area, that one's planned to be removed as a part of this.
I got a question for you, Liz. I'm trying to visualize the flow of traffic in the future and I'm seeing Savannah, or Savannah Way go so far. Where does that connect up with Engler? I'm just kind of curious, I'm not seeing, I didn't know if I saw something like that. I'm not seeing, I didn't know if I saw something like that.
So it will go all the way through?
Yes.
It will, okay.
Isn't it goes all the way through to the, through the Heiney Site?
Okay.
If this cuts right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Because it looks like we're going to get really busy with a lot of housing in here. So just trying to, just picture what we're running into in the future with some of the developments. Thank you.
Other questions for Liz?
Well, I've asked this before. I'm sure you know what my question's going to be.
Perhaps.
Is the trail along 44?
Yep.
And any update on that?
Yes, so there is an improvement plan for County Road 44 to occur. What's the year on that one?
We have a, part of the interchange project, we do have an open house scheduled for actually Wednesday. By the way, Matt Clark.
Matt, can you speak into the microphone, please, so we can pick you up on record? If you happen to remember the date and time and location?
June 20th, I believe. Start time, I think it's from 5:00 to 7:00 is when we have the open house scheduled for the interchange. It's a project being led by the city, coordinated by the city. Work 5:30 to 7:00. But yes, to your point, we do, as a part of the interchange project, it essentially includes upgrades to 44, basically from the cemetery to the west of the freeway. And we will be incorporating a trail and a sidewalk along the county highway. Trail would be along the north side, and then we do have a residential sidewalk component that would be on the south side of 44.
That's great.
And how many lanes was 44 supposed to be when completed?
Right now, the project is being scheduled all in 2019. It really is planned for a 2019, 2020 continuation, but there's a very good chance that the project will be bid all at once. It's just a, it becomes a question of timing and how much of the project can be completed.
How many traffic lanes would there be total when it's finished?
Right now, the County Road 44 would be what we would consider a three-lane section. So there would be dedicated left and right turn lanes. There would be basically at the two residential intersections. At the Savannah Way intersection where Liz has kind of pointed out, which would be the major access point into and out of, the intersection at 44 and Savannah Way is proposed as a roundabout, a roundabout. So essentially a three-lane section, very similar to what we would see at Hunter Mark and things like that, only a divided section. So it creates more of a gateway into the community, adds a lot of streetscape elements and things similar to Engler Boulevard, west of 212. So encourage all to come.
And where's it going to be located at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, June 20?
It's at the Curling.
Five thirty.
No, five thirty seven.
Five thirty, five thirty seven. And where is?
Curling Center.
Event Center?
Event Center?
Yep.
Other questions for Liz? Misty, you got yours answered, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. So we'll give the applicant an opportunity to approach and talk a little bit about, add to the narrative here. Like to introduce yourself, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Pat Rossi with Tradition Development, and I have Dave Nash with Alliant Engineering here this evening as well. So I want to thank staff for the presentation this evening and working with us over the last several months to refine our design. When we met with the commission a few months back, we'd been working with another builder on the development of the site, and some things have changed since that time. We've also faced some challenges with the site with the impending project, MINDAP project and the interchange there, but that also presents a lot of opportunity for the site. And our design has been somewhat fluid on that border and is, of 212, and as Liz mentioned, we are still working through some of the issues there. And just over the last few days have commissioned a noise study there for the lots that will back up to 212. So I think Alliant Engineering and Dave Nash have done a very nice job with preparing the site. It's somewhat an irregular-shaped site, but they made good use of the land and incorporated the natural features that we have on site. We've talked about the woodland that's being preserved, is that 12-acre park in the center area there, and then the majority of the wetlands being preserved for enjoyment as the development comes forward. So one of the key features with our development are these cottage-style homes, detached town homes, and they can be a bit smaller, but I would, I would point to the fact that they are more orientated north to south. They're more of a rectangular-shaped unit, and they, they're a decent-sized unit. They're usually very well-apportioned. When we talked a few months back about the cottage or villa product at that time, there was some concern about those units not having a three-car garage. Well, with the change in builder and working through our in-house builder, Robert Thomas Homes, the cottages that we build in other communities, for the most part, have three-car garages. We have side-load and front-load units. All of the side-load units are three-car garage units, and the majority of the front-loaders are as well, not at the entry, but they are a double-stacked type of garage with a tandem load. So that's some basic information about the project here tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Sounds good. Do we have any questions for Mr. Rossi?
I think we talked about when you came before on your concept that we were hoping to see some single-story or elderly people, one-level type homes. And is that still in the works at any place at all?
With respect to one levels and basement-free, you're referring to?
Or, well, you know, basements are just about mandatory in Minnesota.
Right.
But I mean, one level, they don't have to go to the basement.
Right. So the cottage units are a one-level type of product. So they have a rather large footprint north to south, but one level, if you don't include the basement. Now, we haven't, to this point, built any on a slab, but we have discussed that internally as a future offering. It does affect the, you know, our planning for the site and the grading with the earthwork. So at this point, we haven't included any slab-type products, but that may be something we see eventually here.
Well, we were just hoping we weren't seeing, going to see stacked units, that you have stairs from the garage to the main level and stairs from the main level up. So you are really having stairs no matter what.
Certainly.
I'm hoping not to have that type.
No stairs.
Thank you.
I have a question. What proportion of the, of the units will be the side-load versus the front-load?
So I thought that question might come up. I counted of the 49 units, we have 20 on the current design that are side-loaders. So the, so the side-loaders get to be a little bit longer dimension.
Yeah, they're harder to do, I understand, yeah.
Because the garage is out front, it's orientated so that the side faces the street. So they take some of the, you need a little bit longer lot to fit those in with the appropriate setbacks. Okay.
Other questions?
I guess I did, now that we're talking about garages, I guess I do have another question. On the ones that are not side-loaded, but are the cottage ones, it looks like the driveways are 20 feet long? Is that?
Twenty, 20 feet from the curb to the face of the garage?
Yeah. It kind of looks like that on what I can see.
I think that they're in that general area. I may have to look to Dave here for the exact dimension.
No, that's, our site, our requirements are 23-foot setback from the right-of-way line to the garage. Porches can go into that, but we're at least 23 feet plus whatever the boulevard distance is.
It's just that in some of the newer developments, sometimes you see the larger RVs, or not RVs, you know, the big SUVs, that they're hanging over the sidewalk, you know, from the, you know, they pull up and they look like they're reasonably close to the garage, but their back end is over the sidewalk, and that's, that's a concern for me. I don't, I would love to have the sidewalks be accessible to everybody. And oh, what I should also ask, is this going to be an association or is it just regular individual owners?
There will be an association for the entire site. The cottage-type homes will have an enhanced association and enhanced fees to cover snow removal, basic lawn maintenance. So yes, there will be an association.
So the cottages are effectively detached townhomes?
Correct.
Right?
Thank you.
Other questions? Well, thank you very much, Schulman.
Thank you.
So it's a public hearing. We'll open it up to anyone who would like to address the planning commission at 8:42 PM. Oh, come on.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Carl Taylor, joined by my wife, Bonnie. We reside at 4180 Big Woods Boulevard. We are one of the connecting properties that is located on the southwest corner. Can I get some overhead visuals here? Yeah. If I could. I just got a few. And you'll have to excuse me, I'm a little rusty on parliamentary procedures.
Yeah.
We'll see if this.
This is just a zoom of that.
Yeah, basically, I'm this location that's right in here. I'm 3.68 acres.
Liz?
That might be better.
I thought there was one that was on the deck already.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can just go back in the deck on the computer.
Yeah. So this would be me here. Been a Chaska resident since the late 80s. We, my wife and I purchased this property, this whole component here, back in about the early 90s. We had the old farmhouse that's located in this situation here. It's now being run as a business by Keith Wolf. He runs a trucking organization out of this area and does a lot with rocks and boulder type of work. We fell in love with the area and moved back in, again, in the early 90s, and decided at that point, it obviously was the township of Chaska. But as time went on, we decided it was time to start a family. So what we did is we sectioned off the old farmhouse parcel and built our residence in the pasture area. This property, which we acquired from my father-in-law, has been in his possession since 1976, when he acquired it. And during that time, there had been cattle raised there, livestock, horses. We've had a horse for our daughter there at one point also. A couple of issues, I just wanted to explain our situation from our perspective about this developmental proposal. Back in 9, excuse me, 2015, I noticed in this area back here, some large earth-moving equipment showed up, and they were going to start digging. And immediately, I went down there and addressed the workers and told them, we have a common drain field that abuts my property along with this, used to be called the Kerber piece, the Kerber Farm. And they're like, yeah, okay, thanks, great. And what did they do? They started digging in there, mining topsoil to finish off the preliminary stages of the first part of the development down there by the cemetery. They were using the topsoil that was being mined in this location to dress out the rest of the lands there instead of trucking it in. So, and this was in October of 2015. Come that following spring, of course, the weather comes in, and what happens is my backyard starts filling up with water, and immediately it was evident that they had ruptured the drain tile. Let's take a look here, see if I can get some pictures. This is kind of a shot out of my back window. There's the fence line that delineates my property along with the development proposal piece up here. And what has happened is my pasture area here, where I was pasturing our horses, started to flood out. I immediately contacted the development company, and they kind of hemmed and hawed a little bit, and oh, okay, we'll fix it. I spent the summer with a backyard full of water that was way over the delineation marks that you'll notice are kind of laid out here on some of this. Anyways, long story short, a couple of years of trying to chase a few people down at Traditions was not fruitful. They came and they tried to do a simple fix or tried to remedy the situation, but I was left in a hardship. I had half my property I couldn't use. And then I started thinking about it, and it's, it became apparent to me that Traditions is not a regulatory agency, they're a developer. So who should I be talking with but none other than the people in the city and the county, which set forth policy regarding, you know, wetlands and such. So that's when I contacted Matt Clark and a few other people. And, you know, everybody was real, I guess, interested in hearing the story, but I didn't get any movement on any potential fixes. Well, a couple of months back, we had the first proposal of the development of this area, which actually, I believe Pulte was involved with it, but they pulled out of the deal. And I looked at the documents that were provided, and all of a sudden, my area back here, the wetland delineation had grown to a size that was unrecognizable. They were using the delineation and setting that delineation according to, after the problem that they created by rupturing the drain tile. If you go back six, seven, eight, all the way back to the early 50s, when the drain tile was originally installed, there's never been any standing water in that area. So, you know, I've been trying to work with the city, trying to work with the, the water people here in town, and... people here in town, and really didn't seem to be getting any type of satisfaction at all. And then lo and behold, was at a meeting last night discussing, you know, the, the developmental corridor here where they're gonna put roundabouts in, and, you know, made mention of this problem that I'm having. And I also told them that I knew there was a meeting tonight and I was gonna come and talk to you about it. And three years of nothing happening, this afternoon at two-thirty, my phone starts ringing. And people are all, hey, we wanna help, we wanna take care of this, we wanna make it right. Well, okay, that's a start. It's better than where I've been in the past. Up until this point, we've had three years of non-usage of that area just because it's been flooded out. Long story short, I appreciate the folks at Pulte, or excuse me, the folks at Traditions reaching out and wanting to maybe come to a common ground on this and see if we can reevaluate the delineation markers that are there now for that wetland. As it sits, as it's drawn, if you look, you can kinda see how some of the areas have been partitioned out as lots. And with included thirty-foot setback from that wetland, I would have two to three lots there that would be totally useless as it sits. So, so that's a work in progress. Secondly, another contention of ours is we, we had met earlier in the year with Matt Clark and he explained to us that there were gonna be some assessments put upon us and, and on our property to pay for this Savannah component here. This is the road that leads from forty, forty-four up. And, okay, well, tell me more about it. Well, we're gonna charge you twenty-four thousand dollars for these assessments. And, and what is that gonna get me? Well, it's gonna get you special benefits. So I was promised special benefits. And I, I asked, what are these special benefits? Well, we don't know, we can't tell you. But when it comes to develop your property, you'll realize these special benefits. Okay? It's kind of a hard pill to swallow. So, last night at the meeting, I found out what I had purchased for my twenty-four thousand dollar taxation is, the picture that you see of this is a little bit, it's, it's missing some of the documents. And really what it comprises of are two roundabouts that are being put right at forty-four and Savannah Junction. And then further on down the road, just before the on-ramp to the two-twelve expansion as it takes entrance there. So, now, I've been told that I'm losing, oh, about fifty-five feet of my front yard to accommodate the boulevard. And there is the boulevard component in Big Woods Boulevard. I was wondering where the boulevard was, but finally, I, I guess now it's made its big reveal. So, I'm now in a situation where my property value, three years ago, we spoke with a realtor and he says, you know, as it sits, your house and your property, I would list it at about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we're like, great, we've worked hard, we've been here all of our life, this is our dream spot. Now, we come in and we've got our three point six eight acres and half of our front yard is gone. We're being encroached upon this new roundabout system that they're putting in. And if you look at this marker here, I think maybe some of the special benefits include this road that is gonna be stubbed in right to our back lot. But what they're doing is they're stubbing it in and they're putting half of it on my piece, the other half on this little rectangular box which is owned by the city. And then this road will run down the center line between myself and my neighbor, Keith Wolf, and finally terminate in a cul-de-sac. You know, I'm, I'm assuming maybe that portion of it is my responsibility, I'm okay with that. But as we look at it, I'm kinda landlocked here. My ability to do anything with this, this plan as it sits is, is predicated on me beating up my neighbor enough to say, yeah, let's develop at the same time so we can stub this road in and, and finish it out and bring it down. If you look at the property itself, we have had one of our agents reach out to Traditions a while back ago and say, you know, would you be interested in, in acquiring our piece? Yes, but we don't want your house. Well, prevailing pricing right now, out in this area, is about eighty-two thousand dollars an acre. If you take that times the three point six eight acres I've got, it comes in roughly at about three hundred thousand dollars. My tax value and assessment is rated at four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And I once had this golden level that was kinda thrown out there that at the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I am kind of being boxed in. I'm, I'm not able to develop my piece unless I get my neighbor to agree to do the same thing. And my property values, as I sit and watch, are starting to circle the drain. I can't get anything, I, I can get half of what my property was three years ago when somebody told me it was worth. We're, we're at an impasse. We're, we're, my wife and I are devastated. And we just don't know what to do. We, we feel like we're boxed in. We don't have a lot of options. And, you know, Pulte, excuse me, I keep referring to them as Pulte, but Traditions is gonna do wonderfully with these homes. Great concept, great plan. The city, hundred and twenty-nine new taxpayers. Isn't that what it's all about? Ostensibly? And then there's me. As I sit and watch, my value were down and down and down. So, my recommendation is let's pump the brakes. Let's say, hold on a second. Traditions and the city can take this plan, they can have another look at it and rework it so it's a little bit more amenable to all the parties involved. Not just the benefit of Chaska, not just the benefit of Traditions. But I'm a homeowner here who's been here many, many years. And I feel like we're being held hostage in this situation. So the question is, what would you do? Would you just take one for the team? Go Cubs? That's all I got.
Thank you. So.
Questions?
Al's right.
Any questions at all?
Anyone have any?
Processing.
Well, you know, there's a lot of issues there and I'm not sure I can tease all of them out. One issue obviously is the damage to the drain tile which has caused the expansion of the wetlands, which is a problem, which I don't know that that's within our purview per se. That's really probably an issue more between you and, and that developer.
Well, actually, it's, it should be an issue between the city, the regulatory agency, and the developer.
Well, and I, and I do see that there is a, one of the conditions of this proposal is a more detailed study of that wetland.
Yes.
Do you understand that correctly?
Yes. But.
So, so that's one, one set of issues. Another set of issues is the loss of the front yard to the roundabout.
Yes.
Again, that's, I don't know that that's.
Granted.
Purview of this group either.
This is, this is not maybe directly.
Yeah.
Attenable to this particular development, but I'm, I'm painting with a rather large brush.
The context is helpful, so I appreciate that. But I'm just, I wanna tease out what, what can we deal with and what can't we here, so.
Right. But I think that the way in which this is drawn is something that maybe could use some reworking. You know, it's, at this, as it is, we find ourselves kinda landlocked with not a lot of ability to do anything unless we happen to beat up our neighbor enough to say, yeah, let's join the team and we'll, we'll both go at it. Keith Wolf is running a contractor's yard here. He's got a, a, a trucking business and he's, he's, he's an absentee owner. He doesn't even live at this property. He's got no intentions of moving on down the road. Now, you look at that type of business and how that's gonna plug into this community, this new school that's gonna go in across the street, again, I'm, I'm painting a bigger picture and including a few more elements that are not particularly related to this development approval. But I think that there can be some, some, some consideration given to, as drawn, what we've got going on here in our ability, our inability to, to make good with any of it.
So, so let me just recap and say, you know, what the issues are. I think that's where you're kinda.
That's kinda, I'm trying to get my.
So, here's what I've got, is that, is that, there's, the first one is the drainage field, right? So the drainage tile was, so let me just go through these. So drainage tile was busted and basically that created a, a hard flush of large wetland which was documented later that was really not the size of the wetland which should've been there in the first place.
Correct.
So, that basically encroached on developable property for you, lowering property values. There is assessments pushing your property from the development of highway forty-four. So again, it's hit you for almost as much as your property's worth, right? Then there's the losing fifty-five feet of the frontage yard from the roundabouts, again, you know, taking away developable property from you, right? So all of these things contribute to the fact that also in fact that your landlocked, those four things put together contribute to the fact that you have less land to potentially market or sell back to anybody. So, in your perspective, you're feeling like you have like no options left, right?
Right.
And then.
Exactly.
The contention here is that Traditions created some of the initial problem by creating this drain field problem by, by, by breaking the drain tile when they were removing dirt from the topsoil from the neighboring property that they had rights to, the Kerber property, correct?
Yes. And, you know, it, it's, it's kind of a long, complicated story and I apologize for bringing in all the elements. One of the issues I had with it originally is when they went on out there, they just started digging, okay? Now, I'm a environmental health and safety person. I, I work in the industry when it comes down to issues involving industrial stormwater runoff, that type of thing. They did not pull any type of permit to do this work. They had their original construction SWIP in place for their area down and the original development. But when it came to mining this topsoil, it's more than a half mile, actually, it's more than a quarter mile away from the main project, which would have required a separate stormwater pollution prevention program. At, at the bare minimum, some type of erosion control. Didn't happen.
So, to the, to the end of, you know, what we'll be able to address here or not, right?
Right.
In terms of, you know, with the really, realistically, the, the items that we might peripherally be able to address is the, is the wetland size because it's something that if it was created, because of some action was done, there may be some discussion there. But all the other items, including the, you know, the easements from the roadway construction, that's county.
Right.
Things that are assessments, again, that's county, right? The, of course, the issues with the, I think the plating is something that, in terms of the, you know, the access to that property from others, maybe we could have some discussion on. But a lot of it's contingent upon the willingness of, of Traditions in terms of what they're willing to do. Now, in terms of what we can do tonight, effectively, what comes to the table is basically, it's a yes or no vote. It's either we say yes, it moves forward, it goes to council, it's a recommendation to council, council makes the final decision.
Mm-hmm.
Or we potentially could say we could hold and say, you know what, Traditions needs to go back and figure this out. Those are the three, practically three options we've got in front of us. Luke, you know, keep me honest here. Did I miss anything?
Well.
You know, the three options are we can either vote yes, push it through the council, say no, you know, council, we recommend a rejection, but effectively it still goes through the council, they still make the final decision. Or we say, you know, we table this discussion to another date, at which point then Traditions has to go back and figure it out. Correct? So those are the three options we got in front of us today. Now, that said, you know, I would like to give Mr. Rossi an opportunity to address, to at least to talk through this a little bit too.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioners. I did speak to Mr. Taylor for a while, for several minutes this afternoon. It was the first time that I had heard from him on the, on the wetland issue there and being relatively new to the company. I wasn't, I wasn't around when the damage to the drain field that crosses the development property took place. I had spoken with some of my colleagues, they recalled the time when it, when it was damaged and that it, that it has been repaired at this time. So, so I think, I think the, the drain tile is functioning now, I think adequately. And I, I think Mr. Taylor indicated that it was, but that it may be controlling the, the, the groundwater, the drainage at somewhat of a, of a higher level. So, I understand that concern and I discussed the wetland concern with our consultant, Cellog Environmental Services, via email this afternoon. We're planning to touch base tomorrow and conduct an enhanced study of the wetland there. I received similar direction from the city's wetland consultant that we need, that we needed to see that through. So, we're, we're taking steps to, to look at that in more detail. And I think at a basic level, you know, we'll look at historical aerial photographs of the site, try to ascertain the size of, of the wetland. But I would add that, you know, tradition development doesn't determine where the edge of the wetland is. We, we rely on wetland experts to go out and delineate the edge of the wetland. It's dependent on several factors, sanding water, the vegetation type, and then soil conditions as well. So they're, they're able to, to determine the edge of the wetland. Not us, you know, from a developer's perspective, less wetland is usually better. And in this case, it appears we've, you know, got more, more wetland than, than we would like to see in this location. So we're taking steps to see that through with respect to the wetland. I, I can't say much more at this time, other than we'll have more news tomorrow. And if we're allowed to move forward, we will address this issue prior to coming before the city council. With respect to the property, you know, we, we did a high-level analysis of the property. And Mr. Taylor mentioned the value, the parent value of his property and we have a fully functioning business on, on the other parcel. The value of the parcels with the improvements that have taken place, in our analysis, are likely to greatly exceed what we can pay, pay for the land and still have an economically viable property. That's why we didn't pursue the acquisition of those parcels any further. We did provide. We did provide potential future access from the north because I think it's, it's unlikely that another access to that parcel would be granted to either Savannah or the county roads. So, we, we provided that stub street that'll be paid for solely by Traditions development to get, to get the road down to the property. Regarding, you know, the landlocked field there, I think it's, it's kind of a function of the, the, the size of the property. He mentioned that he owned the entire parcel at one time and then it was split off. And he, he built his home on that site and it's a very nice, nice site and, and close to nature. But by doing the split, it really doesn't give us room to put in a, a street and, you know, have lots that meet, meet minimum setbacks and size requirements while only looking at, at one site. So, that, that's another, you know, it's another problem with pursuing the position of those parcels.
Any questions for Mr. Rossi? Okay. Thank you. Okay, this, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, so, we'll close the public hearing at nine twelve. Bring it back to the planning commission for further discussion.
I have a question for staff. It's actually for Matt Clark. You know, that last condition that was added was relative to further assessment of the, of the, and, and subject to your approval, it looks like. So, can you tell us what you'll be looking for in, in that assessment?
Yeah, so essentially what, what will be done is there's a contest period or a, a contest option for-
You speak up, Matt. We can't hear you.
Yes, there is a process that the city has reserved on this particular one. And we're just going through the exercise to make sure that the process that was used to delineate the wetlands, that there was either an incidental increase or no net increase to what the area and the boundary that's delineated, what's shown. We need to see that process through and be sensitive to the neighbors to make sure that, what it is that's being at least delineated for the parcel that's proposed to be developed is shown correctly. What it is that may or may not exist on the adjoining property would have to be determined at a later date for when it is that if the property were to develop or be improved, that a delineation would have to be done separately.
So, let me ask a question about access. So, once County Road forty-four develops the roundabouts and the roadways, how would Mr. Taylor and his family be able to access the property?
With a right-hand turn.
Basically, the access, because of the proximity of the driveway in relationship to the neighboring Collector Road, the Savannah Estates or the Savannah Highway, there's some safety issues. And regardless of what it is that the city would build for an intersection, the driveway essentially is too close from a speed and a overall design perspective. It's unfortunate, but we did discuss this kind of in detail and it just essentially cannot be supported because of the, the speed of the highway.
So, because of that, that means that the existing driveway, that's reading between the lines here, the, the existing driveway would have to be effectively decommissioned and then-
It would be a right-in, right-out.
It would be a right-in, right-out.
Yes.
So, it would be against the edge of the roundabout.
Yes, it would be, well, again, the driveway is quite a bit, quite a bit west-
Okay.
-of the roundabout.
So, the roundabout-
It's, it's, it's not in the roundabout. It's, it's several hundred feet west. So, there is clear sightlines and things that would be established. So, it, it really is guided by speed and the safety along the highway.
Because effectively, since this is getting developed into a larger roadway at a higher speed, then it would no longer be safe for Mr. Taylor and his family to use a-
A full access.
-left-in or to use a, you know, truly use a left-out.
Yes.
So, now, the other, the other alternative, which again, has cost to it, too, is to have, to use the roadway internally, going back from the stub road once it's complete. But of course, that means this, you know, land that Mr. Taylor would have to crunch back through his own property and then wind back around.
Yes, and that, that's really the, I mean, the decision the city made is, is when we were looking at both parcels is that we were preserving a future access or an access should they want a development street.
But, but those issues are really a function of the development of that roadway, not the development of this project. So, really, that's out of the purview of this, of tonight's meeting, so.
Yep. So, in terms of the context of tonight's meeting, tonight's meeting is really focused on whether or not Traditions as a preliminary plat, a preliminary, preliminary plat and zoning can move forward based on the fact that they've demonstrated that they meet those, effectively, the, the planned usage of the, of the land and that's consistent with other planning that's been approved to date, right? Now, if there's concerns, we could all make conditions against concerns that, you know, that may be able to, may have some, hopefully ease or not completely remedy the situation. But I don't think there's anything that we can do tonight that's gonna completely remedy that situation. But, you know, certainly I would hope that the Traditions is gonna step forward and try to help out in some way, shape or form. But, yeah, I know that, you know, from a research perspective, it will be limited, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to find some remediation in some way.
Well, if they've already hired and talked to a wetland consultant, I, I mean, I think that's a, an important step.
Yep. So, so coming back to the commission, what do we think, guys?
One thing I'm unclear on is this twenty-four thousand dollars that, that they've paid and who, who that was paid to? He said it's for, he was talking about they, they spent money on-
That, that's not really a planning and zoning.
Yep, that's something else.
Okay.
That's out of context.
Tax assessment.
Assessments.
Yeah, this is assessments, this is county assessments.
Okay, okay. I just wasn't clear on what that was. Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So, thoughts, this is, you know, this one's a tougher one because there's, you know, a homeowner adds, who has the property and their, their livelihood, so to speak, at, at stake.
Well, as for the project itself, I mean, it's fairly dense, but it's consistent with the plan. And I like the, the variation and the articulation of the design elements of the different houses and so on. On the whole, I support it.
It sounds to me like both parties wanna, I mean, come up with a, a solution here and it, it's gonna take, you know. I guess what I'm, I'm, I'm thinking is, is, is by approving this to move forward, I, I don't wanna hinder the, the discussion of taking place. There needs to be some time to be able to go through that, that process a little bit. And I, I think it would be helpful if it was just suggested that, that, that both parties get together and work with the, with the city a little bit more to see if there's a, a way to get around this. That would be my, my thought around it.
Are both parties willing to do that? You know, you guys get together with the city?
Yeah, you know, it's not my, I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus or cast aspersions. I'm, I'm, we're, we're reasonable people. But what you're asking, when, when I see I lose half the value of my property, like, that's a little unreasonable to me.
You have to keep your approach on that.
Again, I was just mentioning that both my wife and I are, are reasonable people. But when we're asked to forfeit half the cost of our property and the value, it, it just seems a little unreasonable. It may be difficult to attribute it to any one of these elements in particular, but I'm looking at the perfect storm here that's happening and it's all swarming around my piece. And it's starting to affect us and we're saying ouch, you know? Can, can we get some relief somewhere? Can we do something? Nobody's looking out for us, you know? Again, the, the plan, gorgeous plan. The city, great, new members. We need, we need new members. But we're taking it in the shorts here and I, I just, I gotta say something, so. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Bonnie. I just wanna say, and I don't know if this has to do with the actual road people or what, but if we have only one way out of our road and that's a right-hand, my concern is we don't even have an opportunity if we wanted to develop the back half of our land. You know, we're not expecting Traditions to do anything, but if we wanted personally to sell off pieces of land because we only have one access, we can't even do that to help increase our value.
Well, I see your point and sympathize. It's really out of the scope of what we're able to address tonight. So, those are issues you really have to address with the city and the county, so.
I think that, and just also to make note, this is a, this is a recommendations commission. So, you know, obviously they're elected, elected officials. The city council will be the ones that I think you'd wanna, certainly, you know, tell this, you know, share your, share your dilemma with. They may have more tools at their disposal to be able to help you than we do. So, that said, I wanna make sure that we're clearly focused on what we actually have in scope, which is whether or not this, from a development perspective, can and should, can go forward based on the fact that meets the criteria of, you know, of the planning, of the preliminary plans and it meets the criteria of things that we have discussed before. And there's, you know, no major callouts that aren't gonna be fixable within the next phase. Now, if there are some things we wanna make as conditions, certainly encourage us to have discussion about that and say, you know, let's make sure we include those. But, you know, this is something that I don't necessarily wanna rush just because, because this is important.
Right, right. It sounds like there's, there's a lot going on with the roads and everything else right now. I, I don't know what the sense of urgency is with, with Traditions to be able to, to move this forward and start developing. But, you know, from, from a stewardship standpoint and working with their neighbors, I mean, they're gonna have to get along, you know, with what's going on here right now. So, I think it would, it would be who, both and all parties to be able to see if they can help or go through a, a transition or a period just to try to figure out what they can do working together. That would be my recommendation.
It sounds like we always, we always have, we already have consensus that, that Mr. Rossi and Mr. Taylor and the city will be able to meet at some point after this meeting. Thoughts?
Oh, one of the provisions in here as well is to study the wetland issue again, which is-
Which is important.
If we, you know, if we make the recommendation, that's on the table.
Okay. What else? What will we, what we feel is missing on the table? Anything we're forgetting?
The issues that I'm hearing are not relevant specifically to this project, so I don't see any other conditions that would fall out of that.
Agreed. I'm happy to see, just speaking about the development again, in the past, we've asked for a single level living. So, I'm glad to see that. I think that's a need. The park is great, so I don't really have any issues.
Get ready for a motion? Does anyone else have anything to add? Excuse me.
Okay, I would move approval of the preliminary plat and rezoning for Harvest West Traditions, PC number twenty eighteen dash twenty.
Second.
So, motion by Keyport, second by Bovee. Any further discussion on this one?
Would there need to be a condition or, I, I mean, there's already been a decision that you're gonna get together to discuss this. Does there need to be something added in there that addresses? I mean, my main thing would be like the wetland issue. Is that actually resolved? Are we looking at it?
That's condition number thirty-two on here.
Well, that's a review of the wetland as it is today, but is the wetland as it is today-
So, so maybe it's-
The way it's supposed to be.
So, the revisions, that might be a historic review of the wetlands based on prior to the drain tile damage.
Correct. I, yes.
Well, you know, City Engineer Clark indicated that the only review that he can do at this point is relative to the wetlands that are in the perimeter of the project. And the issue is outside of the perimeter of the project, so that's not really something that we can put a condition for things outside of the project, so.
That's, it's like half in, half out is kind of the problem, right?
And again, it's a, it's an issue, but it's a separate issue from tonight's project.
Although the wetland itself, when they come in and do the wetland, they're not gonna say, "Oh, I'm gonna stop right here at the border." They're gonna look at the whole piece of wetland, right, from that perspective? So, I mean-
I think to put in a historical look at the wetland, I don't see why that could, should be an issue. I mean, should it?
That'll be fine. So, so that, so the, just because I know Matt was a little away from the microphone. So, Matt had just stated that it would be a, could be a recommendation from this group that hits a, uh, analysis or a review, including the adjoining parcel of the wetlands from a historic perspective.
That sounds great.
We need to vote on that amendment to the addition of that condition, since we've already had a second, so.
Do we have, so we need to do, because we haven't, we have, we've had had a second on this before this, for the discussion came up. So, do we have a vote on it without it and then we add the amendment?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
So, go ahead. It's condition thirty-three.
Yeah, so add, so we can just add the condition now, then we can re-vote.
So, we need to vote on condition thirty-three first, right?
Condition thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
So, what's what we're adding right now?
That's what we're just talking about.
Yep. So, what we're, what we're adding right now, we're talking through that right now.
But, but there's only thirty-one, so how can there be-
No, there's thirty-two.
Where's? So, that got added.
There's thirty-two, so it would be the thirty-two.
Yeah, there's a new version of it got pushed, so that might be an older copy of it.
Oh, okay.
So, condition number thirty-three would be as stated. So, what we'll do is we'll take the vote on condition thirty-three, right, which is this new one, and then we'll go back and vote on the main one, okay? So, on condition thirty-three for the re-
Really, it would be an expansion of condition thirty-two to include the historic and adjacent parcels.
Yes.
So, a revision of, of point thirty-two, yeah?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go back. Okay. We got that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, review-
Vote on that.
Okay, so, just restate for the record here, just-
All right, so we'll, the amendment here is to change provision thirty-two to include the adjacent parcels and the historic condition of the wetlands.
Correct.
Okay, so, any further discussion on this one? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we take the motion and the second for the main one here, so we need another motion.
Well, a move to approve the preliminary plat and rezoning for Harvest West Traditions, PC twenty eighteen dash twenty, subject to the thirty-two conditions as amended.
Second.
So, a motion by Keyport, second by Dolkey. Any further discussion on this? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, what that means is this is a recommendation moving forward and I think we have to do-
A zoning.
What's a zoning one as well, right? So, we'll save that for a second here. So, a motion for zoning?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning from open to planned residential district PRD seventy-two.
I'll second.
So, a motion by Cross, second by Keyport. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So, that said, I think, here's the thing, it really, really burns me up that you're not getting really, you're kinda getting the raw end of the deal on this. I don't disagree with you at all in that. What we can do here is very limited in that regard. City council may have more tools available. Definitely go back to city council meeting. This, this will be presented at council on when?
It's Monday, June eighteenth.
Monday, June eighteenth, so mark that day in your calendar. I certainly encourage you to meet with your- I certainly encourage you to meet with your representative for your ward, talk with them, talk with your council person, and, you know, have that chat, because I think it's really, really important that they have a good understanding of that before that council meeting, if you can get ahold of them. So certainly, that's what I would recommend. But I do, I do appreciate you coming here and sharing this, because I think it's important to have for the record. It's important for us to have for context of what's going on as we make future decisions about this, so. Okay. Okay, so that concludes that item. So, item number seven D, China Pagoda.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. Last and final item tonight is a concept plan specifically for seven nine eight Yellow Brick Road for China Pagoda. So the site, located here on this aerial, is the former KFC site. So it is a vacant building that's been like that for several years. So they're looking at basically rehabilitating the existing building out there. So that's what the concept plan approval request tonight is for. In terms of the zoning district that they're in out there, they are a part of the PCB three, which is a planned commercial district. The use to bring their China Pagoda business to this building would be consistent with that. If you are all aware, they do have an existing establishment here in downtown, just off of Fourth Street in the strip mall area. So they're basically looking at this site as their permanent place of being. So the site itself is roughly zero point six-three acres in size. Again, like I said, it was a former KFC building, and since then has been vacant and basically dilapidated. So seeing someone interested in reinvesting into the property is definitely a plus on a staff level. So their intention for the site is to basically use what's there existing today. So they're using the existing building, the existing building footprint out there, as well as the existing parking lot. There is a drive-through component on this site, but they are planning to remove that as a part of this project. So more of a zoomed-in, simplified scale of that site plan. As you can see, you know, there's not much change to the overall site as it is today. With the removal of that drive-through, they will be implementing more green space on the north side there. So that will open up some doors for more landscaping on that side, which is a definite plus. The access into the site will remain the same as well. There's two of them on a private drive off of the parking lot into Cooper's. So those will be maintained. A full access will remain on that easterly access into the site to access the parking lot. They are planning to change the access on the westerly side to be a one-way access, so you cannot enter from this side. Basically, people entering the site would be able to wrap around and obtain additional parking on this west side, which is mainly intended for employees to use and then exit the site that way. But it's meant to basically kinda simplify the parking situation out there for the customers and the employees. In terms of the design of the building, so again, they're, they're basically trying to reskin the building as it is today. So they provided some conceptual elevation drawings and a couple of renderings of the site to give you an understanding of kind of the overall look for it. Again, with the fact that they're in the downtown area, it's not much different than kind of the process that we went through with the hotspot gas station site redevelopment project and really hitting on that sensitivity to downtown and the context and the design within downtown. So we have been able to sit down with the applicant prior to this meeting to kinda go over these elements and pieces that could potentially enhance the building and provide consistency with downtown. So you don't, will not see that reflected in these drawings tonight, but it is something that has been discussed thoroughly with the applicant in terms of how they can come forward with their preliminary plans. But again, that's kind of a big component behind the design piece and trying to utilize an existing building that is basically not compliant with our building design and materials ordinance right now. So with it being vacant for over a year and someone occupying the building, that compliance with that code will be a requirement. So it will be working with them to come up with a design that's sensitive to downtown, but also something that's gonna meet our ordinance in terms of building materials composition. So we've kinda gone over a couple facades that should provide kind of the most significant aesthetics or articulation. And I think with the south and the east facades here, being that they're heavily exposed to public right-of-way and public exposure, that most of the articulation should be occurring on both those sides of the building. The west side is pretty much not very visible from street level, given the vegetation that's existing on the west side. And then on the north side, with the addition of additional green space out there and the fact that mainly their internal and kitchen operations and storage are oriented on the north side, it is difficult to get more windows or glass, more articulation on that side. So coming up with a solution of landscaping to help basically hide that facade and orienting all of the articulation to the south and east facades is kind of the general direction that we would be comfortable as staff going forward with. So, again, we'll be working with the applicant as they submit with, for their preliminary plans to look at that a little bit further. But the main materials that they're planning to use is brick, cementitious siding, and some glass out there. And then with the brick, they are planning to use a Chaska brick color. So they've done kind of a preliminary analysis, kind of showcasing some elements that they see in downtown Chaska and implementing them into this building. So again, just getting to a point of further refinement with the applicant to figure out what those elements are to tie in with downtown is kind of the next step in this process with them. In terms of kind of the overall design and color of the building, again, you know, we'll be working with that, but I think the, the color of the building tends to come off a little dark, so we've provided some suggestions to the applicant to see where there can be ways to lighten up the building and some of the elements. So that'll be another piece addressed as we move forward. So in conclusion, at this concept level stage, we do feel like they did present us with a good concept plan at this point, and there are things to work on, but things that we can definitely address by preliminary. So with that, we are asking you to make a motion to recommend approval of a concept plan for seven nine eight Yellow Brick Road specifically for China Pagoda, based on the conditions that are listed in your staff report. Happy to answer any questions, otherwise the applicants are also here.
Okay, any questions for Liz? Thank you, Liz. We give the applicant an opportunity to approach and introduce themselves and add to the narrative a bit.
Good evening, I'm Jeff Fafferman, owner of Inspire Architects.
I'm the owner for Hang Wong, you know. And I try to help China Pagoda move in there, you know. That's my wife.
I think Elizabeth...
He will always help me, the architect, you know.
I think Elizabeth explained the project pretty well. We are just looking at reskining the exterior. There are some upgrades that we're looking at doing to the site as well, including quite a bit of landscaping.
I think it's in the staff report, I would encourage you, as you look at landscaping, to look at in terms of pedestrian spaces or public spaces that people can gather and so that the landscaping is not just beautiful, but also functional. So, again, you do it, you think makes sense, but that would be my encouragement, so.
Let me add to that, Emily, add to what Commissioner Keyport said. It's like, I think that, you know, like, we saw earlier the Dunkin' Donuts, they had like an outdoor patio with maybe a few tables, things like that. That kind of adds to people gathering, you know, things like, I'm assuming you were talking about things like that.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the values that, that we are trying to promote for Chaska Downtown Development, especially is that concept of public places and spaces, so.
And we are looking at, one thing that wasn't mentioned is we are removing the existing glass atrium area. So that would be a good opportunity, a location for...
Any thoughts, questions?
It says here you're gonna remove the pylon or monument sign that's there. Any thoughts on what would be the replacement?
I don't think we are removing the pylon sign. We'd be replacing our...
The monument, okay. I'm trying to think of what, what it looks like.
Yeah, I don't think it's been determined at this time what their plans are with that, but we've encouraged them to look at the existing monument sign that was once there for the KFC for additional signage opportunity. If it's not used, then it should be removed.
I agree. It's very overgrown right now and in very bad shape.
Any other questions, comments? Two things come to mind. One of them is that, you know, I agree, the, the exterior from just like a coloring perspective is very dark, but I think that one of the things that concerns me is that there's only three exterior windows in the front of the building. So, you know, from, and this is something that's really completely up to you guys, that I think that, you know, from most dining experiences, you wanna have more indoor light coming into the buildings. That way it gives more of an open feel. So, so I would encourage you to, you know, to actually have, you know, more windows or have bigger windows to, you know, leverage the fact that you have, you know, some views outside to, you know, make it feel more open inside. And, you know, always adds to the sense of, adds to the sense of place within the building. And I think the, the other, the other item I just wanted to mention is a, is a thank you to, you know, especially to Architect for really, you know, putting forward the concept plan here with, you know, the illustrations of the understanding of scope and context from a design perspective of who your neighbors are, your traffic flow, walking paths and that, because I think it's something that we're starting to see more of. I just want to go out of my way to thank you for doing that, because it is something we're starting to expect more. This is a good example of a small project where you're going to effort doing it and demonstrating that so you can actually, we can make, so we can all be on the same page, that you understand the context of what's happening around you. So thank you very much for doing that. So, any, any other questions at this point? So, so thank you very much. Open up to the audience, if anyone'd like to come and add anything there, then... Yeah. I think they're probably voting on it right now. So we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission, so further discussion on this one.
I think they've given us good, a lot of good info for the preliminary, you know.
For concept.
Plan, or concept, I mean, and obviously, we've been waiting for this to happen for a long time. So, let's go.
Yeah, I would say China Pagoda has been a terrific asset for our downtown, and I'm glad to see them moving into a new space, and I look forward to the, to the redevelopment of that property, so.
I'd chime in with, with the windows. I think that that, that would be a huge disadvantage by, you know, from what they've got right now with all the window seats and people used to sitting by the window and, and looking out and seeing what's going on around the city. I think, you know, just taking another look at that and adding maybe a few more openings for people to see through.
I think it's great for, at the concept level, I'm excited to see landscape plan and how that's going to kind of accentuate what's already there, but it's great.
Thank you very much for being part of our community, too. It's really, you know, we're very thankful to have you guys as part of the community and, you know, hope and look forward to seeing you continue to thrive and prosper in your new location once this is built out. And of course, maybe sharing some Chinese food with the rest of the Planning Commission, anytime you feel like it, you know.
Or have a field trip.
Or have a field trip.
Yeah, a field trip.
I think we'll have to check it out, just really see what it looks like, right? So, okay, do we have a motion here?
Yep, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the concept plan for China Pagoda at seven ninety-eight Yellow Brick, PC number twenty eighteen dash twenty-two, subject to the twenty conditions.
So motion by Dolphy, second by, by Kelly. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And thank you for, thank you for being a part of the community, too.
Thank you for the patience.
Sorry. So the next item, and so the next two items are postponed, right? So, other business, receive the other meeting minutes. So, do we have a motion? Have we reviewed all the meeting minutes? Sorry, and I just also wanna apologize for being at the tail end of the presentation here, so. Have you received the, do you those?
I think the last time we didn't, we didn't...
We did, it's at the very end, they got moved to the end.
No, but I meant we didn't have to vote on it.
Oh, we don't have to vote on these? Okay. Oh, this is what, this is, so this is just more like it's information, got it, man? So other business, we just go through. And then we'll go through any other business on our side. So, Commissioner Kelly?
I'm glad the wayfinding signage is, is being discussed. It seems like that's been in the works for long enough and, and like to see some things moving forward with that. I do echo a lot of the things that Commissioner Keyport put in with, with the trail systems, that type of thing. I've looked at trail systems. I think people tend to go around in circles, you know, in their own neighborhoods already. I think they wanna get to and from someplace as opposed to go around in circles. And that would be just my, my thought. There's, there's parks like, such as Carver over here off of County Road eleven. It would be nice to be able to get over to the regional trail that way, but that's, that's, that's working some things out with some of the other cities and, and making that happen. But I, I would like to see more, more studies done, a little bit more with recognizing that people wanna get to and from places opposed to going around in circles, just my thoughts.
Commissioner Cross?
Other than to state that, I'm glad that there is, is going to be some type of association to take care of the trees, because when there's no association and trees on the boulevard, they are not taken care of. That's all.
Nothing, sir.
I have nothing there.
I don't have anything.
I'm just excited about the iPad that made my life easier this week reviewing materials ahead of time, so, thank you.
That's true.
And so next, and next month, we won't receive the actual packets, so it'll just be electronic only, right?
Five trees in the process.
Right, that's, that's the question I was gonna ask tonight, is we're gonna try to push this to be solely electronic now, and if you guys are comfortable with that, because it could eliminate a huge step in the process for us.
The only thing I would request may be that, you know, this, my thought is, I kind of like writing notes as we go. Sometimes we're having stuff here, just by having a copy of the agenda. There's a single sheet just here, we don't need it sent because we'll have it digitally, but just having it on the tables, that would be nice to have.
And then Liz, I thought that you showed a coup, a couple of times tonight during different presentations, you showed like aerial views of, you know, actual, and I, I either missed it or didn't see those in the...
Yeah, we typically haven't been including them in the packets, but we can certainly do that.
But if you could include them in the electronic, that, I think that'd be him.
Absolutely.
I think they're in there, but yeah, they're kind of, some of them, depending on which one.
The overview of the new harvest, you know, and one that she showed, which was very helpful, I had not seen in the packet.
So some of the context aerials that kind of, you know, set the stage when we kind of have the discussion is... So some of the context aerials that kind of, you know, set the stage when we kind of have the discussion is actually helpful to have when we're actually reviewing the packet.
Or actually, it was probably, it may have been in the paper packet, that, you know, we had, that we got mailed to us, but it's not on here, so.
But that, if you say that, yeah, that was helpful though.
Yeah, the over, you know, the aerial, yeah.
So we need to purchase a drone, or?
Well, she had them, so.
Liz flies drones in her spare time.
She's got something to play with.
She's very talented, she's out working so hard here.
So, anything else missing?
No, nothing else.
Liz?
No, that was my only question, and just making sure that you guys are, um, orienting to this new system while, and if you have concerns or whatnot.
Cool, did everyone get your signed papers to Liz too?
Yep, so-
Okay, so we're all signed off.
A couple of people, so email it, drop it off, uh, either way, or it's okay till the next meeting, that's fine too.
Okay, cool. And then, anything else?
No.
Kevin?
Two things, um, in July, we'll be bringing the commissioners' handbook back, so any last comments, things, uh, that will help me. Uh, and related to your iPads, um, I did talk to, um, G I S person and our, um, I T people, and we can put our, what we use, our G I S programs, which is fairly easy to use, on which would allow you to develop and look at your own local aerials from different angles, not the ones that we choose. Um, and it's also got all the historical aerials, it's got a lot of information, um, that, um, lets you dig in as kind of far as you want to go. Um, and so, if people are interested in that, let me know, and I'll try and, um, figure out the best way to get those applications, um, pushed out to you, and so, but since we have that, um, we have a fairly simple, you can use Google Earth or something, it certainly gives our, um, our system that we have, um, that could release, um, a fair ways into, um, information that we have.
Yeah, I think that'd be very helpful, that would-
I guess.
Probably would have took care of my suggest, or question for tonight, or anyways.
It, it, yeah, it's, it's a very robust system, we've got a, a area of kind of paddle back and forth, like a loop bar, and you can see historic aerials, and you can kind of just move it back and forth and pick the areas you want to see, and look at the property, and see, you can see how things have changed over time, and it's, it's got a lot of very interesting tools to it, that you can just look at very simple stuff, bring them, carry it back, right?
So this also, it also has the, um, accurate property lines and plating, and-
Parcels, yeah.
Parcels, right.
All parcel.
And it also, it's, and it's a separate system of the county G I S, because I know that Carver, Carver County has G I S.
We run it together, we actually, um, partially hire a G I S coordinator through the county and the cities, and so, we're all kind of using similar systems, so, um, I just talked to her, um, yesterday, and, um, she said that wasn't a problem, I mean, it was a problem, so if people are interested, let me know, and, um, we can get that pushed out.
So just a show of hands, who's interested?
Yes, yes, please.
Pretty much everybody.
I'll, I'll turn it over, we might have to have a mini work session or something, just to, you know, apply and, uh, show you kind of how to use it.
Sounds good.
It's not very hard, it's pretty intuitive, but it's got a lot of tools.
Cool, and I think that just in general, just especially because A, there's interest, and B, because that's kind of what we do in this group, it's one of those things that, it may be kind of no-brainer, just that, you know, that planning commissioners get that, you know, because it just makes sense for us to have it, you know?
Right, I'll follow up on that.
Much appreciated, Kevin.
Yep.
Luke? Matt, you have anything? And I've got a couple, a couple items, just really minor things here, um, just when I was driving down here, I saw a ton of people at Fireman's Park, you know, out just enjoying the sunshine, which apparently we've missed being here, sorry, guys.
The ice cream social today.
Yes, the ice cream social, but it was really cool, I mean, it's one of those things, I mean, it's, I know that, how many, it was like two thousand fifteen, we opened, you know, the, the curling center and the event center and stuff, and we had the rededication and stuff, but to see it and drive by and compare that to the empty, plodded dirt that was out there, like, how many years ago, it's just so, so heartwarming, just to see, like, it's being used, families out there enjoying it, and it's just great to see that, and just reminds me of all the hard work that went into that. And also, um, Highway forty-one construction, and, you know, they finally closed a section of forty-one from between Hunter Mark to Piner Trail, so that'll be closed till September, I think everybody and their cousin already knows it, um, but certainly just my only, you know, my main message here is just drive carefully out there, because it is like, it's moving and changing as construction continues on. So, like, this morning was different than yesterday morning, because they reconfigured and had people driving in different lanes, so, I just asked everyone, just drive carefully into the construction zone for the safety of yourself, pedestrians, cyclists, and the workers out there too. And, you know, hopefully Mid Dot will finish that quickly. And of course, um, the only last, and then of course, this is a reminder, on June twentieth, Wednesday, from five-thirty to seven P M, the interchange open house at the event center.
And last- I sent all of you an email, except Charles, I didn't even bounce back.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I didn't load on my, you mean on this, or?
No, your, your home email, and so I sent all of you tonight, the, uh, invite, so.
Oh, you did, oh, I was going to say, because I didn't get it, but if it was tonight, then-
You sent it while we were here.
Yeah, well, so.
While you were sitting there, I forwarded the, uh, invite.
During the last several hours.
Tell me to check your email.
I'll, I'll write it down for you.
And was, and one quick question, was there any update on City Square West from either Mr. or Dan?
Um, no, we didn't have a meeting since last night, no.
Sounds good, so, okay, sounds good, do we have a motion to adjourn? I said it already, I'll give it, yeah.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.